And it sometimes, you know, distorts what actually.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Gibson Planning Board meeting for the last one of the year, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, just one note, uh, if you're here for the in with town homes, they've been removed from the agenda, but we will still do a public hearing since it was noticed. All right, first up is Serenity Greens on South Road. Come on down.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Josh Griesen, here to represent Serenity Greens LLC. Along with me, I have Jason Ludwig, our architect, uh, who has, uh, proposed and created our site plan, and, uh, I'll let Jason take it away.
All right. Can I share my screen? Again, Jason Ludwig for JL Architecture.
Okay, good evening. So this to kind of bring you up to speed, the property is the old Umberto site, twenty-two forty-five on South Road or Route nine. And what we're proposing is to turn this into a shopping plaza, a multi-tenant shopping plaza. It used to be a restaurant with a car wash and one other tenant that was a locksmith, uh, tenant. So we're proposing, the existing site is pretty much a hundred percent impervious surface. As you can see, this is the existing survey of what is sitting there today. And what we're proposing, to just give you a little backdrop, this upper north side, uh, east corner, we're gonna be removing about eight feet by fifty feet of that corner. And if you know Umberto's, that's the glass sitting area that they had. That's a very bad disrepair. So we're gonna be taking that away and creating new sidewalks and area walking paths for that, uh, section. Same with the back area where they have the existing walk-in cooler and some storage. That's really hideous and eyesore as well. We're gonna be removing that. And again, like I said, the existing site is a hundred percent impervious. It's paved all the way around. There is no rhyme or reason to the parking as it sits today. So, um, let me just get to the site plan.
Yeah, it's been there a lot of years.
Sorry, this is a little slow here. All right, here we go. So here's what we're proposing, our, we meet the parking requirements of, uh, I believe it's four spaces per thousand. We're actually reducing the size of the building. It was over ten thousand square feet, it's now under ten thousand square feet at nine ninety-eight oh three. So we're cleaning up the parking and giving a little bit more rhyme or reason to, um, the layout. We're adding more, uh, impervious surface around the backside where it was just, uh, really too wide for any kind of circulation. We're adding new sidewalks to go around the perimeter. All the storefront, all the storefront tenant spaces will be accessed in the front. The dispensary will be accessed on the northern side, but we want to put our ADA parking spaces in the front so it's the most closest to the other tenant spaces, um, and to the dispensary. We are proposing to, uh, we did receive comments regarding that south entrance suit from South Gate Lane. We are proposing to keep that open as a one-way in, no out. So that way we could have people coming that are coming northbound on Route nine could easily access the site by making a left at that intersection and turning into the site rather than going up to Neptune Road and doing a U-turn and coming back in. So we would like to leave that entrance open as a one-way. We had comments, you know, proposed for the sidewalk and the grading along Route nine of that little median there is not really ideal for a sidewalk. It has a slope to it. So I understand the, the board is trying to connect to the bus stop across the way on the other side of South Street or South Gate, but the grading there is fairly steep and as it gets to in front of Red Lobster, it's even steeper yet. And as it gets to Dunkin' Donuts, it's even steeper there. So it's really not ideal to, uh, or feasible to really put a sidewalk in that location. Again, we have, we're meeting all the parking requirements that are required by code. We moved the, uh, refuse container up to the northwest side so that it keeps it away from the residential as required by code. You know, just to give you an idea, we are gonna be, these are all details for that. We are gonna be providing quite a bit of new landscaping along the back where we're removing some of the impervious surface. We want to plant trees along the backside to kind of, um, screen it from the back parking lot and give it a nicer, uh, park light-like appearance. In the medians where we're adding curbing around the building in these areas, more landscaping just to, because right now it's very, it's a very blah-looking building, right? And I think the more landscaping we can put around there, the more attractive it's gonna be. It's an ideal location. It's gonna be a, uh, pretty, you know, predominant location for visibility, and we wanted to make it look the best that we can. We're gonna be adding all new lighting throughout the site so that there's, right now, all the lighting is attached to the building. We'll be adding new poles. We adding new poles along the back parking lot and on the south side, we'll be attaching lighting to the building and then the side here so that, um, for security reasons, we want to make sure that the light, the site is very well lit. Uh, there's been issues in the past with vandalism and some crime there. So we want to eliminate that and make sure that it's well lit, everybody is safe, all the patrons are safe, and that the building, you know, doesn't get broken into like it has been in the past. I know we received some comments, we do have to revise our lighting plan a little bit and give some more details. We will address those comments for our next submission. And to give you an idea of, just for the inside of the building, we're proposing five new tenant spaces. So we're looking to take the car wash. Bear with me one second, this computer's a little bit slower than. It's got a mind of its own.
Holidays are coming, it senses it.
So here's where, we want to take that existing car wash that was there and turn that into a thirty-five hundred square foot tenant space. And that's where the owners are seeking, they're trying to find a cafe or some kind of food establishment to go back in there. So at this point, we've received some comments about removing the existing grease trap. We don't want to do that because if we remove it, it doesn't make any sense to remove it and then have to put one back in. So at this time, we're, we're seeking to leave it as it is because we're looking for a food establishment to go in there. We will have two other tenant spaces or three other tenant spaces that they're looking for like-minded, uh, businesses in kind, most likely retail spaces to go in there, and then the dispensary will be on the far left-hand side which faces north. And the way that is laid out for security purposes, we're showing the patients will be coming into a vestibule area where the IDs get checked, no one under twenty-one can enter. There is a reception check-in area, and then they get buzzed into the retail area where they purchase their cannabis, and then they exit out the front of the building. So nobody is, there, it's, keeps that flow of traffic of people coming in, doing their business, and going right out. So nobody is kind of going out, in and out the same entrance. To give you a little idea of what the building will look like compared to what it is now, rather than showing the uninteresting CAD drawings, we'll show the renderings of what we're proposing. This is what it would look like, the, on the left, on the right-hand side, that is the dispensary, which will have a new entry vestibule. That tower is gonna mimic the other element on the south side of the building to keep it balanced. The dispensary is gonna remain very, um, simple and discreet. And the other tenant spaces, we're basically gonna paint the brick to a dark gray to redo the soffits or the, um, the parapets above and stucco those to a nice light gray color and add signage with new canopies. So that's basically looking at it from, looking south at the building, and this is looking north. Which, this used to be the car wash, this is that architectural element that's there, and we're gonna be proposing four new tenant spaces there. And I think those parking spaces in the front, I know we received a comment that parking is preferred to be in the side and the back, but we're using those for handicapped parking spaces, which lead them to be the closest to the entrances to the establishments. Just another view, this is what the dispensary will look like from the outside. A couple of windows. We have the new vestibule with the tower going in, and then the front exit coming out, the, the exit door in the front. And the back, we're gonna be closing off those garage doors that are there, and basically it's the employee entrances to the back of the tenant spaces. And that is all we have right now.
All right, thanks for the presentation. And just keep in mind with architecture, that any HVAC needs to be screened by the parapet.
Yeah, we'll have a three-foot parapet to screen that rather than doing screening up there, we'll let the parapet, uh, hide the mechanical equipment.
Thanks. Krista?
Okay, great. Thank you for the project overview. Um, so this application is on for a public hearing tonight. Seeker review for type-two action, site plan review, and architectural review. I just would like to note for the record that the application, um, appeared before the town board, and the town board granted the applicant special use permit for cannabis retail dispensary on November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and so now the applicant is before the planning board, um, strictly for the seeker review, site plan, and architectural review. Staff, you know, this is your first submission to the town, uh, you know, with this application, so, um, there are a number of comments. This is not atypical for a first submission, especially when you're redeveloping a project site, um, and you're trying to retrofit, um, you know, new uses into an older building. And, you know, our code has changed, and so it is quite a, an accomplishment, um, when you're all set and done with it. But, um, yeah, the, there are a number of comments related to parking, um, site circulation, um, the ingress egress out of the property at the southeast corner. These comments, I think, are probably best discussed, um, at an interim meeting, meeting with staff, potentially DOT or traffic engineer before you would make another submission. Again, not something that's atypical, but it would allow us to get through some of those more technical comments offline. So when you resubmit and come back to the planning board, we, we've kind of come to a resolution to address a lot of those concerns. So with that, uh, just a couple other things to note on, we did receive comments from DOT. We also had submitted this application for comment to the town police department. Um, I just want to make sure that you did receive those. So if you have questions, we can, obviously, planning staff can help facilitate any further discussion or conversation about that. It is a newer use in the town, the cannabis retail component, recognizing that you will have other tenants as well. But for that particular use, I know that there were some concerns still, so, um, again, happy to help facilitate that conversation as needed. Also, county planning had submitted a local concern with, uh, comments, comments relating to site circulation and that, um, ingress egress from South Gate. And then we also, again, had our traffic engineer take a look at the project. Uh, this, this site has been under review over the last five years, two times prior to this. Um, and in that, in those cases, just for the board, just as a reminder to the board, um, they were demoing the, the existing building and starting anew. This project is looking to reuse the existing building, so there might be some constraints, um, that come with that, such as being able to fit in a sidewalk appropriately. But we still would like the applicant to take a look at that in addition to the connection across South Gate Drive. I know the county also included that in their comments. And, and just some other elements about circulation for like emergency access and things like that. And, and this would be a good time for the board to weigh in on any preliminary architectural, since you were kind enough to share with us what you're, you're looking to do. I think it would be a good time sooner than later to weigh in on, on what they're proposing.
Great, thanks, Krista. Bobby?
Sure. Um, nothing too crazy. Um, we did comment on that South Gate entrance. It, it seems to be a bit of a headache in the past, um, and cause for confusion with the circulation and, and traffic. I understand you want to change it to one-way, but we still don't see it as necessary and would prefer it to be closed off. The, uh, uh, just, uh, double-check the ADA parking and grades, make sure that meets code requirements. I think it's a good idea to have it in front, like you said, which is closest to all, the majority of the tenants. I did notice, too, it looked like on the vehicle plan, the ADA spaces were shown on the other side of the building.
Yeah, there was a discrepancy.
Yeah, it's probably just a plan revision or something, but just take a look at that. The grease trap thing is definitely fine if you, if you do, uh, think you might have a re, a restaurant tenant. We would much prefer you leave the grease trap in place. I don't know the condition of it, so, uh, we would likely need to set up a site visit with the sewer department and, uh, check it out, do an inspection. It probably needs to be cleaned. And then we'll have to look at any, uh, like, uh, mechanical drawings you have for the plumbing system to make sure that the right components go to the grease trap and, and anything, because obvi, I don't know how it was, where the utilities were in the restaurant. But that might have to be looked at to make sure we're disconnecting the plumbing and reconnecting what should go to the grease trap, not the domestic flow.
Yeah, could, yeah, right now, everything will be disconnected because it's where the old kitchen used to be is gonna be this, the dispensary.
Okay, okay. It's very happy about the reduced in, uh, impervious surface or, or impervious. Couple things on that. It seems like because of that shrinking of the parking lot, it's impacting the circulation of the fire truck around the back of the building. So take a look at that, see if there's any way you can manipulate maybe the angle of the parking lot to help that swing. And then, um, on those, uh, reduced areas, we'd like to see some decompaction efforts because it is a, a parking area has been that way for some time, so, um, fluffing that soil up would be good to help the groundwater. We had some comments on the lighting, which aren't that big of a deal. And that's pretty much it.
All right, thanks, Bobby. It's good to reuse an existing building if you can. But it, it does have constraints, as, uh, Krista mentioned. Uh, can you unscreen your screen? We can have, uh, absolutely. Our traffic consultant weigh in. Mark, are you there?
Um, so it looks like Kevin is on.
Kevin, Kevin, I see you.
Yep, so I think, uh, some of our comments were already summarized by others, uh, with, uh, one of them, the, the, that we, that wasn't mentioned was a request for a traffic study due to the, the volumes in the area of the, the signal at South Gate and then also up at Neptune. We're requesting to have that analyzed as part of the traffic study for the proposed development. And then, uh, some of our other comments, as, you know, summarized already, include, uh, the intersection or maintaining the driveway that's at the intersection. You know, we're concerned about that from driver confusion as long as, as well as other conflicts that, uh, that are existing with maintaining that opening and even as an entrance only. And, uh, the providing of, uh, pedestrian facilities along the, the frontage, uh, just to have that reviewed and provided because it, uh, there, the site is noted to have pedestrians access to site, so, to be able to provide those facilities on and off the property. And I, I think lastly, we had some comments, uh, with, uh, turning analysis, uh, with passenger vehicles and delivery trucks as well as the fire truck turning analysis.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Yeah, that's, that, traffic, uh, particularly surrounding the building is a good concern, the fire trucks and such. All right, uh, at this point, I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, it go in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application tonight? Anyone on Zoom? If you're on Zoom and you wish to comment on this application at twenty-two forty-five South Road, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Seeing none, I move we adjourn the public hearing to, we go to February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Moved in second, it go in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. And we'll go around the board for comments. Start with Nicole.
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, a lot of things have already been said. Um, yeah, I think you need to get with the police department. They did have some concerns, obviously. I think you can definitely, I think we need to talk further about that South Gate access. I think we would really like it to be closed. Um, so, but we can talk further about that. Highway work permit, you'll probably need that. Um, yeah, I mean, ultimately, do you have any idea what the other tenants would be at this time? I know you were saying you possibly want like a cafe or something, but you have those other three spots. Do you have?
Oh, right now, we don't have any tenants. Like, we haven't proposed, uh, or spoke to a realtor to like really like push, uh, or market these spaces being available.
Yeah.
So once we, once we get them, we get a better answer, we would be, we'll be able to answer that a little better when that time comes.
Okay.
One of them's quite tiny, I think.
Yeah, right, where the locksmith used to be, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, Rocco?
Okay, a couple of quick things. You know, obviously, the reuse is really, really good. And, uh, I'll echo what has already been said regarding in the southeast entrance should be closed, say, uh, et cetera, and maybe find a way to, to put the sidewalks, uh, out there, uh, in the front. But, uh, the car wash being turned into a restaurant, I've got a, a couple of, uh, sort of inquiries there. Uh, how many people you think, uh, that you're looking not to sit in there? Yeah, that's a, that's a substantial space, thirty-five hundred per square feet. I mean, even, even when you put in a large kitchen, you'll probably still have about a couple thousand square feet.
I would, I would say the kitchen would take up a lot of space. We haven't really explored any interior, um, space designing yet, but, uh, you know, I, it depends on what kind of tenants going in there. It could be carryout, it could be dine-in. Uh, we don't know at this point. We are trying to get some kind of food establishment in there.
Now, would there be, uh, it's an, it's an entrance from the rear as well?
Nope, it would just be from the front.
Just from the front, okay. Are you considering, would you consider any outdoor space?
So.
I, I think that that would be something you'd want to plan for ahead of time.
So that, that's part of our, the card we're holding in our back pocket with that South Gate entrance. So if we close off the South Gate entrance, we'd like to explore, um, areas of doing some outdoor dining in that, instead of having a one-way all the way around the building, being able to give the opportunity of having some outdoor dining space. Because without that entrance there, there's no need to have traffic circulating all the way around the building. So that's kind of, you know, something we're gonna be wanting to discuss if we're gonna be, you know, looking at closing that entrance.
As long as the fire department agrees with that circulation.
And that's the conversation with them as well, because right now, it's, it's, you know, there, there's issues that they're having with the turning radiuses around the building, but the building is existing, so we can't move the building. You know, i- if it doesn't work today, it's not gonna work tomorrow. You know, it's been there for years.
Other than possibly cutting that blade back or something, but, yeah, in any case.
Okay, yeah, I see, uh, uh, if I'm not mistaken, that's a flat roof build, and I noticed that you did add on, you know, the north side, it's an architectural feature, kind of a peak. Can, can anything be done to kind of eliminate the, the flat roof?
To eliminate the flat roof?
To make it look maybe a little bit, uh, better than it does?
Well, we're, we're trying, we're gonna be redoing all the parapets, and we want to maintain that mid, it's, the building has a lot of character, and we want to maintain that mid-century modern feel that it has. And, you know, over the years, Umberto's had put in these brick archways and stuff like that, and we want to get rid of that and put in new storefront glass and give it a more modern look and keeping it, you know, horizontal, keeping the horizontal. and put in new storefront glass and give it a more modern look and keeping it, you know, horizontal, keeping the horizontal look to it and and with the canopies and not really put a a peaked roof on there or anything, keep it-
Maybe, maybe you want to show your screen again to show the architecture as we're going around for comments.
So we're trying to keep this whole um, horizontal feel of the of the front of the building and have, give it a modern look. We have a friendly Ford across the street that has a pretty contemporary look to it. The deli and the liquor store across the street, even though it's, it's been seen better days, it still has a mid-century modern feel to it. And, you know, I really, I really appreciate the character of the building, and we want to honor that and and keep it kind of going in the same, in the same direction. And really just dress up the area where we have the dispensary going in to give that its its own character.
All right, okay, thank you. Thanks, Robert. Thank you.
Um, well, I agree with closing out that South Gate entrance to traffic. That's just a major headache. It's been there for years. And the other thing is on these uh, open spaces for potential tenants, have you already allocated so many square feet per unit? Or is that going to be open until somebody comes forward?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you.
On the three units that are going to be there for tenants, have you already allocated? And maybe I missed it, the space for each unit, or are you going to have an open floor until somebody says, I want to rent so much?
Yes, so there'll be vanilla boxes, so it's just, it'll be sheetrock and just ready for a tenant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Jason, on space four and five, it just seems like uh, either an employee entrance or what I'm more concerned about having an emergency exit of those, especially the larger space. You're not planning on either one?
So if if, once we get in front of the, that would be a building department thing when we get a tenant. When we look at the occupant load of the building for that tenant's space, if it requires one exit or two exits. If for the occupant load is over fifty and it requires two exits, we will put in a separate exit for egress.
No other question? All right, thanks. And Sid? Any comments tonight?
Hi, nice presentation. A few questions. Um, the presentation was really good. Maybe I might have missed, but the stop signs, the one-way traffic signs, were they part of the presentation? I couldn't see any.
Yeah, they were, they were on the, so we had, let me bring it back up. Again, I apologize for the very large file. So we had stop signs on the south here because we were proposing this to be two-way at the back and the and the north. And to have a one-way around the building. And we have a stop sign proposed at the south corner, where if we kept that entrance open. And there's a stop sign proposed at the uh, north corner before they get to, and we would need a stop sign before you get onto Route nine.
And they would be clear markings on the road for the ways, right?
Yep.
And out of the parking spots, what you have, how many have been allocated for the handicapped spots?
We have two, and we have forty, I believe we have forty spaces.
Yeah, it required like thirty-nine point something, so forty spaces were required, and that's what you're proposing. There are two handicap accessible parking spaces. Um, I think there was a question earlier that um, were specifically that if there are entrances around the building, they might need to be spaced out because it's supposed to be the shortest route. Um, so that's just a conversation with our building uh, department person. Um, but yeah, there's two. Um, typically, it's one per every twenty-twenty-five, depending on the uses, so right now, I think they're sufficient.
Okay, with the kind of business what they would be, still, it's good, is it considered a good ratio?
Yeah, it it'll, again, if the uses change, um, it it could, it could change. Um, and they would have to address that requirement as they put the tenants in, but it is a building code review, so our building department inspectors would have to enforce that essentially. Yeah.
No further questions, thank you.
That is a good point, though. Um, and I know you were bringing this up because I mentioned it earlier this week, but um, there, there's a similar applic- not similar application, but another application where cannabis is, retail is proposed. Um, and a bathroom for patrons is required. Uh, and I only know this because of having gone through that application review, so um, factoring that into your layout for um, the secure access and all of that as well. Um, again, a conversation with the building department because that is out of my-
No, I, I've, I've had the conversation with Tim.
Perfect.
So, yeah, we, we, in our design, we do have access to, public access to a bathroom.
Okay.
Okay.
As long as he's okay with it, then.
Yeah, I was sure in the restaurant, we'll need a mattoe as well. Yeah, I'm going to echo everybody else's concern with the, the uh, closing that entrance out. The other two designs, one of them closed it off and another one was able to move further back because they were changing the building. Even that was suspect, I think, but it's uh, I think everybody's been having trouble with it. I don't know if there's any accident data that can be available that you can find for that thing.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know how they were moving it back because there is a retaining wall that runs that whole south.
They were, they were, they were making it a retain wall, making it.
Wow. Question-
Moved it quite a bit further back so there can be a couple cars queued.
For, for that South Gate entrance, would that be New York State DOT? Because that's on South Gate Road, or would that be dealing with the town highway department?
Probably a combination.
Yeah.
It's so close to the corner.
Right on both. The DOTs ask it to be closed. And uh, sidewalk wise, uh, we were, both of the other applications were getting that in there. I think there's enough room to put one in there. We were trying to get sidewalks all the way from IBM Road down to the deli. And the Red Lobster, and this one is like one of the last two pieces, and so getting a sidewalk along that frontage would mean when somebody comes in for Red Lobster redo, then that would complete our, our picture there from bus stop to all of that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a pretty steep slope in front of Red Lobster and Dunkin' Donuts.
They would have to be, they'd have to be a little retain wall there. Dunkin' Donuts doesn't, Dunkin' Donuts did it a different way. So they have a sidewalk connection coming out to the Neptune Road there.
Gotcha.
And um, so, so when Red Lobster comes in, they would be, or the next, whatever, that that little tenement between them comes in, they would be connecting the crosswalk from Neptune and continuing it.
Okay, so that'd be our, our biggest concern would be, you know, the sidewalk, where it, unless some, unless Red Lobster put one in, it'd be a sidewalk to you know, pretty much stopping at our, at our site.
Yeah, that's, that's our intent to take and continue that. We've built it in pieces all the way through from IBM Road all the way down, and most of it's completed at this point. Mazda just put in a, a long run of it as well, part of their effort. So we'd like you to take a harder look at that. Appreciate it. As I said, we're using an empty building and trying to keep it, I'm happy with the architecture. I think it's a modern look. It is a big building to try to put something, different kind of roof, I think. Let me just check my list. The only other thing, if we were, if you're putting, if we're not, if you're, if you're able to get the fire to say, we don't need circulation all the way around, then you're going to do something like the outdoor seating, that'd be, that'd be fine with me. If they want circulation all the way around, maybe that, that blade has to move back a little.
Yeah, because that, that, that's a, an issue that's already kind of uh, an existing issue. And, you know, there's really, without demoing parts of the building that are un, kind of unnecessary. They wouldn't, you know, it's a tight, they, I think they could fit around. A good driver could, could, it's tight, but.
I'm not sure why that blade was put in there originally, but.
Yeah, and, you know, even speaking with the fire department in our preliminary meeting, you know, they, they resized it from one of their biggest trucks that they have, and I questioned that they, if they really needed that sized truck for a one-story building, so I think that's a conversation too to have with, with the, with the fire department.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you can work it out with them, but I-
Because we do have a fire hydrant located on the southeast corner, right there.
I mean, that was one thing I was looking at for, for sidewalk as well. The fire hydrant is on the inside as well as the, the utility poles, so like, there should be at least five feet.
Yeah, that's where, I'm sorry, I, I don't know, we'll have to look into that, see if we have the five feet for the sidewalk, because we do have utility poles and because I think the other applicants might have been doing all-new parking and and not leaving it existing. So right now, we'd have to look at the grading, the width of that median there between the Route nine.
They were trying to put in a buffer even in one of them, but uh, you can get a tiny buffer, I think, and whatever you can would be, would be useful. And uh, I guess, as Kristen implied, you would try to meet with the police to uh, see what their, I know there's, they have lighting concerns for safety. But uh, we don't want it to be overlit either.
No, yep.
We don't want the six thousand Kelvin kind of stuff going on.
I think my lighting consultant got a little excited.
Uh, unfortunately, the deli has put in some lights that are too bright there. We, that has to be looked into, I think.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, um, because outdoor dining did come up, that's subject to its own zoning code review, right? Um, so that coupled with the fact that this was a highly um, paid attention to application for cannabis retail uh, with encouraging outdoor dining while you have cannabis retail dispensary on the other end. I, you know, there's some sensitivity there as well. Uh, and I, I think, you know, again, if that's something that you are considering, we should probably talk about that sooner than later.
Outdoor dining also has additional parking requirements, that item parking is tight. I mean, how many parking space, that was another question I had, is how many parking spaces?
They meet the requirement.
How many, how many do they think your cannabis use would, would ha, would use of those forty? Do you have an idea?
I would say probably, I mean, people come in and out, they're not hanging around.
Right, it's not.
I would say probably ten to fifteen spaces at a time they would probably use up, if that, because, you know, you figure that a, a customer comes, they go in, they, they buy their product and they leave. And, you know, based on what I've seen going on, like, in the other uh, dispensaries, we have, we have one black market. Been kind of watching them and watching their growth. It, it seems to be um, I would, at an average, I would say probably about ten to fifteen cars max at a time, if, if even fifteen. Because it seems, and people were in there for maybe ten, fifteen minutes and they're, and they're out of there.
Yeah, and I think that that can be a part of a conversation, so what I would advise or encourage you to do, um, reach out, um, when you're ready. I know Christmas is, and all holidays next week, and New Year's and all that, but um, we can establish a sort of a baseline for the data collection rather than you go out and it not be sufficient. Like, let's talk before you would go and pull that information together, because I think those metrics are really important to feeding into the overall um, traffic study. And again, this is not unlike, we've done this for other dispensary applications thus far. So um, you know, it, I think it's really important to establish a baseline, and in particular with this use where you have multiple tenants in one lot, it's under the planning board.
It's a new use in general, that's why we are a traffic consultant that can help look at that as well, what is out there.
Yeah, it's one of those things that's hard to predict because it's really the, one of the first ones that's going to be in the town.
Yeah, it's all, all kind of new, so. I guess we're good then.
Okay. I move that the planning board defer further action on this application. Direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from the town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following one through fifteen.
Second. Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice holiday.
You too, thanks.
And happy new year.
Same to you.
Except with Inwood Avenue Town Homes, that's been removed from the agenda, but I, I moved that we open the public hearing for Inwood.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Uh, anyone wish to comment on the Inwood Avenue Town Home comment uh, tonight? Anyone on Zoom wishes to comment on the Inwood Avenue project, the townhomes? Does not appear to be, so seeing none, I move we adjourn the public hearing to January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. All right, Salt Point Center is up next. Come on down, Jeff. I'm just going to eat chocolate, don't worry. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Aye, good evening.
All right, so yeah, yeah, for the record, Jeff Kane.
Ken Kazimetz from LRC.
And we're here representing, right, Salt Point, Salt Point Center. You know, I think the um, the, I think the majority of the board has certainly seen this, this project uh, for, for a while, and we've worked through a lot of the issues. I think that there are really kind of two things that um, yeah, that, 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 I think we want to talk about that, that, that we've been working on since the last time we were here. One is the uh, the, the, the path up the hill in the back, which was originally proposed as a um, as a connector to the, the rail trail. And what's uh, what's really happened there is um, the county DPW has uh, um, is requiring that any connection to the rail trail um, needs to meet ADA requirements for the entire length of the, of the connection point. And um, I think as we've talked to the board about the, the, yes, you could, you could engineer a plan here that meets those grade requirements, but it would essentially denude that, that hill because the grading to create the switchbacks and meet the requirements um, would, would, would really have a, have a, have a big impact. So um, we wanted to maintain the amenity. We think it is important to the, to the, to the project. We want to maintain the amenity of having the, the walk, the, the trail up in the woods. So we've, we've designed the, the, what you can see on the, on the screen there, um, a trail that loops back on itself. It's kind of, it, it's following the, again, the, the top of the knoll, it's following the grade around the, around the hills. We don't have a big, a big um, a big cut in the grade to, to get up there. I will say that the, the rail trail still remains off to the side here. Um, it would be fairly easy for someone to walk over to the trail, which is, which is good, but it's just not going to be a formal, it's not going to be a bike connection. Not going to be a formal connection, but I think people still will have the opportunity to walk uh, through the, through the wooded area to get to the trail if they want to in a, in a fairly, a fairly easy way. But it just won't be a, it won't be a, uh, won't be bike access and won't be a formal, uh, formal, formal trail there. I think that's the, probably the biggest, the biggest change. Um, and I guess that, while we're talking about amenities, maybe the other change we can talk about is the um, the dog park had to move out of the floodway. It's still in the flood plain, but it's, but it's tucked in. You can see the, Ken's cursing there. It's tucked in back in the corner there. We've got a fenced area. And it's not that, it's not that the dogs can't be in the floodways, it's the fence, I just, just to be careful. And some dogs probably shouldn't, but uh, but uh, but it's, but the fence can't be in the floodway, so we, we moved the, the fence uh, out into the uh, out onto the side there, and um, I think it'll still, it would trigger a review, but uh, but we think that's a, a, a pretty good, pretty good spot for it. But the other, the other amenities, the walking, the, the flat, flat path and benches, as long as they're stabilized, can remain in the floodway and um, we'll, and Tom, you're, you're floodplain administrator, will, will review um, the equipment for the playground, some minimal equipment, just to, to make sure it's, whatever we, we have in there is, is correctly anchored and doesn't become a flood hazard and doesn't, doesn't block any waters in the floodway, so that'll be reviewed on a, I think on a kind of a case, a case basis as we, as we move forward and have, have equipment, have uh, equipment proposed there. So, those amenities, again, we've, we've maintained them, but there have been some changes as a result of uh, of some of the review. And then the second item is, has been, back to the, the parking issue, and I think we, as we, we were here last time, we talked about um, there's, there's, there's- there's, 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 the code required parking, there's been a couple of parking analysis done by our traffic consultant in terms of what the, what the peak parking demand is estimated to be, and then there's a concern, and perhaps very rightly so, what happens if, if our users create a demand that exceeds the amount of parking that's proposed? How, how will the, how will that be addressed? And I, I think, first of all, it's, 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 it's pretty clear, it's incumbent upon the, the owner to address it, this is not something that gets, that gets pushed off to some individual tenant. The owner has to address it and be responsible for, for, for meeting the, meeting the demand. But the proposal is to create a corner of the site there, and again, it's, you can see on the, on the plan there, but next up building two, that would be, I'll say cordoned off, a really kind of soft cordoned off for use by, to valet park, valet park vehicles. And the, you know, the, the waiver provision, which this board can issue a waiver to the parking requirements, and the waiver provision says, as long as sufficient land is available, it doesn't say sufficient, you know, nine by eighteen parking spaces, the twenty-six footer, it doesn't say those things, it says sufficient land. And so what we've provided here, we believe, is sufficient land to, to make up the difference between the provided parking and the, and the code of urban parking, those fourteen spaces. And again, it's, because that is, that is, that remains in proximity to the, the actual buildings and the proposed, the, the potential for restaurants, which we think would be the kind of the biggest driver, that, that, the way this would work is, you know, be a couple of signboard signs, valet parking this way, would direct people over, they, they would drive to the valet area, not gonna have valet running back, not gonna, not gonna drop off at the front door and have the valet run back and forth. You would go to the valet area, drop your car off, you know, you're gonna walk the fifty feet to the, to the, to the, to the building, and then walk back to get your car at, later. So we think, again, it's, it's a much softer kind of valet feel than, 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 I know what I've experienced, particularly at medical facilities, where it's a, it's a, it's a much more, much more formal thing, this would, this will be a, a kind of, kind of a, a much softer valet, valet area, and.
Smaller tip then? The valet would do the parking, though.
Valet would do the parking, yes, yes.
It would be controlled by the valet, so we can stack the cars tighter, we can stack them in front of each other. This is just an option of how they can do it, there's other renditions of how they can fit the cars in here as they need, and they would move cars in and out to, to get your, your space, so it doesn't require that normal spacing where you can pull in, pull out whenever you need.
Yeah, it depends on the car sizes.
Correct.
Depends on the car sizes, and actually, these are probably bigger, we have a bunch of big cars, but, yeah, it'll also, they'll also, they'll also park them based on the car sizes, there's a lot of things that, that, that Anyway, so those are, those were the, I think, the two, the two big changes that we've kind of formalized in this, and, and, and certainly want to talk with the, with the board about it, as well as other items that the, that the board may, 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 may want to bring up.
Have you done anything towards the architecture yet, or?
The, you know, the architecture, we've, again, we've, 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 those perspectives and, and elevation has been provided to you. The, we did not prepare the full, for elevation and boards for architectural review, but, but that's the, that's the plan, and so the idea is.
We'd come back for that.
Generally have a little what?
Yep.
Yeah.
But this is, this is the general plan of what the buildings, as we have shown, would be created into those boards.
If anybody has any comments on architecture, you know, when we go around later, make sure to say that now. Looks pretty good to me. All right, thanks for the presentation. Eric?
Sure. The project did previously receive a secret egg deck and by the board. It's on front of the board now for a special use permit and site plan approval, and aquatic resource permit approval also for architecture. As Jeff had indicated, the elevations are not yet available for formal review and consideration by the board, although we have seen them in the past. So the, the remaining items, as Jeff has identified, staff is, is pretty comfortable with the amenities, as the board is. We did note that with the, if the, the limited ADA access is not provided above, then perhaps ADA access could be provided in the floodplain loop, would seem to be reasonable. I noticed on the plan that the slopes are not specifically indicated, but there's just a couple of small areas where the contours are a little closer together on that floodplain loop and going to the dog park. And since that, those are already grading lines, if that grading could be extended, it might be possible to specify that, that those slopes is ADA, as, at slopes which are in fact ADA accessible, whether designated or.
That's fault, I think, too, so that might make more sense.
So the ADA, the path down below, there is an ADA access to it, already at the north end by the, like, where the valet is.
Right.
That goes down into the path, and then there is a path to the dog park that is five percent along the way.
Okay, so that meets ADA standards?
Yes, correct.
Also, what, all the loop also?
Yep.
Oh, good, okay, great.
There, we, we did put a set of stairs, if, at the end of the one building, just for the fact that that is a fast route down.
Yep.
To make it easier than walking all the way to the other end of the parking lot, but if someone did follow the ADA route, park in an ADA space, they can get down there as well.
Great, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Comment.
Yeah. Then, the only other remaining item, and, and we, we, we think the application is pretty much ready for a condition approval. We've given you a resolution to that effect. And, oh, just to mention for the record, in the, the approval resolutions, the engineers' comments are dated December tenth, and the traffic consultants' comments are dated December fourth, the zoning administrators' comments are the ninth, but it should also include any area variances if there are any required.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, say, say the last thing again, Eric.
Any, the zoning administrators' comments should include any area variances if there are any required. And then in the, if the, for some reason, the planning board defers, all the dates on those comments should be as above, if they, they didn't get transferred down.
All right.
So the only really remaining issue is the valet parking, or the board's, we invite the board to discuss that, there's really two triggers. One trigger, this actually isn't discussed this way in our comment, but one trigger would be for, when, when would the valet parking need to be implemented during the day? And we do invite the board to discuss that, and how would it be conducted?
Yeah, I think, I think they suggested like a five to ten P M timeframe would be when it would be most needed.
Okay, and so that would be just five to ten all the time, every day? I mean, you might want to discuss some provisions to allow for some flexibility.
Yep.
Maybe sometimes the year is busier than others and it's not, and it's needed and others, it's not needed. So if they want to, and then also, do you want to see those again for review or just delegate it to staff? I think if we get some guidance, then I think staff can handle it.
I mean, if there's a rest, a couple of restaurants, and maybe just Friday, Saturday evening, the kind of thing that it would be needed, so.
Right.
Got to work out those details with the staff and, and write up the.
And I, and I, and I think the, the answer is, is, is yes. No, the, 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 it may be that it's only weekends, it may be that it's, that it's, that it's every evening, and I, and I, and I think that there is some trigger, right? There's a, there's a, a problem either that the, that the owner identifies or that the board identifies. And, and when it's put in place, and, and we, I always get to work with, with Lisa to figure out that, that specific language, but when it's put in place, then we'll be able to identify based on what the finding, what, what, what's happening at that time, when the valet should be in place, because I don't, you know.
You don't know, you don't know when.
I don't know, right, right, and, and, you know, we, we keep, we keep here and everybody's gonna not have cars, and so we won't need it at all, but I don't, I don't think we'll vary it either. But it, it.
We'll have the bike racks.
Right, we'll add bike racks, yes. But we, we, we certainly understand that, that, that it's, that what's happening in, in our mind is that this is, we think, a good way to address what, what, what could otherwise be a, be a, be a problem, that's have, have a parking. And then, again, the parking would be open, not, not restricted to valet during most of the day, but, but when we hit those peak times, whatever they're defined, that's when the, whatever the signage comes into, comes into play and the valet comes into play.
That'll have to be worked out. Anything else, Eric?
No, I guess the, just the second trigger would be when, if and when, you know, if and when or how it comes back to the board. And, and I, I guess I would suggest in some of our agreements, it's been, you know, the director of municipal development can determine if there's a problem, refer it back to the planning board. If the planning board's comfortable with that, we can use some language to that, to that effect.
Yeah, I actually thought that this was to, we wouldn't come back to the board and not, so it could happen quicker than that, but, but, but.
No, I think, I think the idea is that it would not.
It would not, okay.
But, but if.
Unless he determines it's a serious.
Not that we're not happy to be here.
Unless there was some real question that we felt we could not resolve ourselves.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
All right, engineering?
Yeah, all of our comments are pretty straightforward, most of them are coordination with the DOT Health Department approval. We had a couple new comments on the, the sewer changes, but they're very minor, it's basically just labels.
One I do want to talk to you about with there.
Go ahead.
Because it was, one of the things we can't do, the traffic maintenance plan, all of that at this stage.
Yep.
I'd like to move that to building department, because when we get the DOT, not for signatures, and the reason is, is the DOT is gonna control what happens in there right away. So if we come up with a plan of how we're gonna shut the lane to do this closure, when they do the traffic and maintenance plans to actually build the roundabout, they're gonna change it all and do it different anyway. So we won't get that until we get the actual DOT permit.
Yep.
So that'll be built into their permit, because we're gonna be required to do it anyway.
Understood.
So that's why, and I just didn't want that to hold the signatures of plans, which, you know, still will affect, I take the DOT permit without the signature plans and, and vice versa.
Yep, yep, yeah, no, that sounds, sounds good.
Okay.
And then there were just a couple very minor, like, just kind of clerical type comments on the SWIP, but everything's in good shape, so we're, we're very comfortable with the application. Great, thanks. And I don't think Carol is on tonight, right?
No.
She was, she was happy, you guys worked on her quite a bit over the last couple of years, and that worked out well.
And we do have Kevin on.
And Kevin, yep, for traffic, who's here, anything else, Kevin?
I think we, we just had, like, a few minor comments with the signage on the site, and then with regards to the valet area. We just had a few comments just with, operationally, you know, if you're, if you're driving there to that bout, we think it's an appropriate area of the site for the valet to, to be operated. Then if you're driving to that area, you know, vehicle, where's the vehicle gonna stop to unload or be parked to and from for the customer? Is it gonna be in the drive aisle, or, you know, we're just kind of, operationally, is it, is it, is there a way of placing that staging area? Maybe not within the drive aisle, or, or in a way that it doesn't impede other people who are circulating the site? And then there's four spaces that aren't noted to be in the, the valet area right adjacent, you know, is that just like a cone designating the area? Maybe those spaces could be included in the valet, is it confusing if you're parking right next to the valet or not? Those are just kind of our, our thoughts with the valet plan, but, but we think it's an appropriate area for, for the valet operations and such.
All right, thanks, Kevin. This is on for public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. Anyone in the audience who wants to comment on this application or on Zoom? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero. Go around the board for comments, start with Sid this time.
We don't have many questions, except the valet parking, so you said you would come out with the signage based on the usage, right?
Well, right, so I think we, we would come up on with the, the hours of operation, if that, by the, yes, based, based on what we, what the anticipated demand is, or what, or what the, what the noted demand is, that would, that could be adjusted, whether, again, it's whether it's every night or, or four nights or three nights or whatever.
Would there be clear distinction between the parking allotted for the residents versus non-residents?
Yes, so I, I, I envision a sign which, which, which allows people to, to park their, i- i- if, if, if valet were in place, the sign would say, you know, you can park here except between the hours of five and ten P M, opposed, the hours on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights. And so it would be, so that's, that's, so it would direct people to be fine to park there, except for during those hours. And that, you know, that, then it's up to the, the management to make sure that that's, that's enforced, so the space is available for the valet parking.
No further questions, thank you.
Thanks, Sid. It just reminds me, is there any, any assignment per unit, like you did at Eastdale for parking spots?
I, I don't believe there's any proposed assignment per, per unit here, so, but, but the theory is, again, you wouldn't, you just wouldn't assign any over in that corner.
Right, that's. All right, go to Steve next.
No other comment.
Chair?
No, none for me.
Nicole?
Yeah, but to first, to let me apologize, because I haven't been to all of the meetings when you've been up, so maybe a, a little refresher is really what I'm after. First thing would be the dog park, I assume that there you have poop bags, garbage, and then collection of the garbage on a regular basis. I mean, not once a month.
Yes.
But a couple, a couple of times a week, that type of thing, okay, and you, and you will replace the poop bags as they go, okay. With the valet, I, I, I was thinking also of, of, of any special events that restaurants might have? Could that be taken into account as well? Because, you know, the, the nights they're, they're closed, if there's a big enough event, they may bring in people to do that, and that might trigger the, the use of the space there of the valet. So that, I assume you're gonna, well, staff will, will figure that out.
Yeah, Ken's got some experience with that from Basser.
Right, yes, I know, how's that working, by the way?
At so far, we've had no issues.
Okay. Now, I, again, this is, are there any E V connections for the tenant?
Yes.
There are, okay.
There are E V, we put them in the middle of the site, there was a lot of discussion of where they are, but that's a centralized location for them.
Thirteen spaces?
I believe it is, yes.
Thirteen, that's good, all right. I think that's, that's it for me, thank you.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you for the refresher, yeah.
And Nicole?
Yeah, I don't think I really have anything, you'll just obviously get some type of legal agreement in place for the valet and what the triggers are going to be, signage, obviously, is gonna be a big one. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have anything else, so.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was our main stumbling block, and getting rid of those stackers is, is good. This is a much better plan, and as you say, you can work, work that out with a conditional approval to get the new agreement done. It being considered, I mean, one, one story I heard from someone is an apartment complex, somebody, a few, few tenants had like three or four cars, and, and that kind of made it hard, tough to park, so I don't know if you'd consider a, like a two-car max limit in your lease or something like that, or.
I'm sure that'll be baked into the whole lease.
Since parking is tight, it's just something to consider.
A lot of what we, we are seeing too, is most residents get one car with your place, and then they have to pay extra for the second car, some places, to discourage having multiple cars, or at least to be able to control whether they can or can't when they know they're parking that. Because remember, you know, like anything, as Jeff alluded to before, the owner's gotta make sure he has spaces for his own tenants, otherwise he's not gonna rate, not gonna have tenants. You know what I mean, so it's self, self-managing in some of that way, too.
Okay, okay, that's, that's good to know. All right, I think we're good to go then, it's come a long way.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan and special use permit approval and aquatic resource permit approval for the Salt Point Center project subject to the following, respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to the following, one through sixteen.
Second. Moved in seconded for conditional, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero.
Can I just ask for the board's clarification? So the fact that we've discussed the, the, the valet parking plan, and the number of spaces as shown is less than that which is required, that could be construed as a waiver without actually, without actually.
Yes, yes, that's.
Passing a resolution to that effect.
Correct.
Yes.
Could, would, could you issue a specific waiver?
I, I think it would clear the record if, uh, if it's possible to add that to your, uh?
Uh, I'm actually going to sit, well, I don't know. Chrissy is, I know the planning administrator has questioned whether or not the Planning Board has the authority to do that. So it might actually raise more questions, I don't know, I'll defer to Lisa. It might raise more questions than it answers.
I mean, we're, I mean, we've filled that with land bank parking in other areas, it's essentially land bank parking.
Right, so there's, Jeff and I may just agree in perpetuity to disagree as to whether this is land bank parking or not. Because you're not really setting aside land for part, you know, the idea is it stays green until you need it and then the board can, so. But, you know, as, as a general matter, that it gets the job done to do it this way and there's certainly no issue with it. I think that the, what we have is, you know, you're providing one hundred and sixty-nine.
Yes.
On-site and then there's the ability to add more and there's a hundred and eighty-three required, right?
Yes.
And so, um, if the valet parking is used, then arguably the parking requirements are met, although they're not in a nine by eighteen spot per se. Um, so, that's not, anyhow, I mean.
And again, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it requires a nine by eighteen space. I didn't, for the, for, for, in areas, this is an area for parking. And I, I, that's why, that's why I, yeah, I think we've met it, but again, we, we could, yeah, not agree, uh, but that's, uh?
I think, I mean, implicit in the board's approval of this is a finding that the parking as proposed meets the required parking demand. So, um, I don't know if you're.
I think that's right. And we discussed it in our comments and that's included on number sixteen, Planning Board comments tonight.
Great, I just, uh, I don't want to, we submit for a building permit for it to be denied because there's no, I don't, I don't, I don't want to, I'm just trying to avoid the surprise. That's all, that's all.
I don't think that will be an issue.
All right, okay.
And, you know, since you're not ready for architecture, I move that the Planning Board defer architecture review of the project.
Second.
Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes six to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Over to you.
Have a wonderful holiday. Have a great holiday, happy new year, we'll see you.
Right, we'll see you soon.
For architecture. One to twenty-five. So, and stop is eighteen thirty-seven South Road. Is there anyone in the room representing eighteen thirty-seven?
Yeah, they're, they're making the way.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ed Lowry, architect. With me is Beth Nash, Associate Architect. And we represent Vanguard Roofing Organization who have been before you about a year ago with a small facade change. As a matter of fact, if you wouldn't mind us pass out, we have a, a small visual for you all to look at and remind you what happened a year ago. You probably remember.
Oh, yeah.
But you might not remember exactly what it looked like.
With some blue.
Pardon?
Some blue warnings, I think.
Well, that was just one minor part, but if you take a look at the, this visual, which shows the existing building the way it is now and what we're proposing to do, uh, I just thought it wouldn't hurt to kind of refresh everybody's memory.
And you were going to put some solar cells in the one.
The solar cells are proposed to go on the large building.
On the other building, right.
Which is to the right of this one. So the reason I've asked Beth to pass this out is just to kind of remind everybody how this got started. My client wrote Kristen a letter and emailed us the other day. And I for, I don't know, I could probably phrase it the way he did, but he says, I didn't realize this attempt for us to pretty up this little building would end up where we are now. And of course, he doesn't get involved with these kinds of situations much. So, uh, I calmed him down and I said, listen, it, there's a lot going on here, but I believe this will be okay. So what had happened is after you approved it and every town department weighed in and had no problem with it. And zoning said, well, as part of your proposal, we need to clean up the back. Well, the property in the back, and it is in the back, but it's part of this property.
Yep.
And, and the contracting firm has materials stored on, like around in that property. And so that became this matter of discussion. I also want to insert at this point that both Ms. Taylor, Mr. Welty, of course makes Ms. Taylor do all the work. And also.
Thanks, Ann.
Also, Miss Grant here, they were very helpful and kind of steering us hopefully to a final conclusion here. But what we really like to do is do this, we'd like to make that little building look like that. Now, as part of that, however, this issue came up, several issues came up and I boil it down this way. From the Planning Department came a number of questions, but that we feel we can answer them to their satisfaction. I believe that and if we can do that, that would be a condition of approval. The second one had to do with the zoning that got a little trickier. I believe we can answer all of those questions also. But two items came up and one has to do with a screen around this area where Vanguard stores their material. And the screen, according to the zoning or the ordinance, requires an eight foot high screen. Doesn't say what kind, but I suppose that could be discussed. One possibility is put an eight foot high wall and have it landscaped.
I bet, right so far?
Okay. So, uh, here's where we would request input from you. And we were told you're the only ones who could decide this. If you've been there, and we've been there a number of times, the property is surrounded by actually original, when I say original, not back to the, when the pioneers came here, but about a hundred year old forest, whatever's left of it now surrounds this property and you can see that. This is the store here.
Rachel, would you mind getting him the microphone? Thank you. Yeah, you gotta, while you're talking at the board there. Just gotta turn.
It's just for the, it's for the fans at home.
Okay, you don't want me to start singing. Okay, so the area that we are discussing is this section in the back of this property. Don't forget, this little front that we're talking about is here. This is the area Vanguard stores their materials. This area around the perimeter, this is all their property. Measures, and here it's a little tight, maybe twenty feet, here thirty or forty feet. And then, of course, there are woods beyond on other properties. I submit to the board that you couldn't make a better screen than that. I mean, this is a natural screen. If we were to put a screen here, eight foot high, number one, it's an expense to the owner. Now, I know that's not your concern, the maintenance of it isn't expensive to the owner, but it would never look as nice as this. And if somebody looked from the outside, they'd see a screen, they'd wonder why. So we propose to substitute this for a screen. Now, we can't do any more than propose it. We request you would consider that strongly and accept it in lieu of the screening that's, that's in the ordinance.
All right, thanks for your presentation, Ed.
Thank you for listening.
Go to, uh, Kristen?
Yes, okay.
Ed, did you want to comment at all on the use actually though? Um, you had mentioned there were two items, so I didn't know if you wanted to talk at all about your zoning comment.
I mean, one concern with the trees, they're probably all.
Okay, one item that clearly we can't help, we can't resolve it without the, your input and your assistance and hopefully your agreement. The other one, and I'm not sure if this is the one you're talking about, Kristen, but let me deal with it anyway. We do have a shed back there that's within the setback, required setback. And so we would need to go to zoning, the zoning board of appeals to get a variance.
Yep.
Now, that little shed, if any of you've seen it, nobody even knows it's there because it's back in the woods. It's back where they operate and it's in the, kind of abuts the backyard of those two properties that are directly south of this property. And if you want to go back there and you want to see a mess, you go to those two properties. But nonetheless, it falls within the setback and we need to go to the zoning board for a variance. Now, Kristen, if you would please remind me of the item you want me to address?
Just about in general, what the materials are used for, right? So, um, sometimes there are contractors who have a wholesale use on the property or if it's.
Okay.
Otherwise.
Yeah, I understand what you're asking for. So Beth, who has got her head in the books, she could probably answer this, but it not could.
So Vanguard Roofing, um, functions out of the building and so they use that storage area for their materials. And, um, one thing I'd like to address is under the highway business permitted uses, um, we found that Vanguard Roofing would fall under, um, a service business, but it also would fall under a business park. If you followed business park, um, you would see that it has light industrial and it specifically says roofing contractor under light industrial. So that is where we find that it's a permitted use to have Vanguard Roofing and their materials on the site.
Does the public go to this site at all or is it strictly an office for the applicant?
So in the large building, there's also four other businesses. There's Enterprise, there's a company called Fast Signs, there's a boutique and then there's Vitality Bowls. It's like a restaurant.
But for Vanguard, their office space, is it just their employees? Or do they meet with contractors or potential customers there?
I would say their clients would also visit the site.
But not, but the retail sales, no, kind of happening?
No. The nature of the roofing business is a contractor, most likely, and, and they're, by the way, a kind of an elite contracting firm for roofs. I mean, they're called in for hospitals, schools and so on. As a matter of fact, we were told during COVID, they had an exception where they could do things other people wouldn't because roofs had to be dealt with. And so as any contractor would go to meet with the client at the client's site. And discuss what needs to be done. Now, if it requires drawings and reports, at that point, the client might come to the contractor's office. And so, yes, the answer is they could meet either onsite or offsite.
So it's, but it's not, you're not selling to general public or shingles or something like that?
No, well, no, we're not, but, uh, when I discussed this with my client, he says he's ready to sell some of those things.
So you may be doing, maybe wanting to do that in that building after you update it.
In the building? No.
They're looking to bring in a separate tenant. Yeah, they actually had someone, um, in mind and unfortunately, given the delay, they, they lost that tenant for that new.
I mean, for the small building?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, just one more little nudge to try to get this approved.
I'm trying to understand, you know, from Lisa, if, you know, what kind of, what is the?
So the reason I was.
The eight foot fence requirement, is that?
I was asking the question because business sales and storage implies that there will be some third parties coming to the site, not just the applicant using it for an office. So if the testimony here is that the applicant will occasionally have people come to the site, you know, you, to come to this office and do work, then I think it falls within the business sales and services use, which Kate, which Chrissy said was acceptable for this site. So I think that takes the use on the site off the table. But that business sales and storage requires the screening and it can only be not more than, I think it's twenty percent of the site? Twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five, I believe.
But the applicant's given some information that they're at only six percent of the site, so we need to have that verified. But I think in terms of the use, based on the fact that there may be customers coming to the site, then they're okay with the use being business sales and storage. So that's why I was asking.
And then the use requires an eight foot screening.
Right, so that's the remaining, that's the remaining question, is the screening, I think.
Yeah, so we recently had another, you know, shingle company and they required an eight foot fence around. Got to look into that, all right?
Now, it may be in this situation that some sides of the yard are adequately screened. I mean, you can't see it from room nine, pretty much.
No, you can't.
You know, but, you know, maybe there's a portion along the, the, you know, the, I guess that would be the north side, um.
The north side and the west side, I mean, the west side is a little bit less trees and, and all the trees are deciduous, I think. So in the winter, it would not be screened.
So maybe something along those portions of the side that, you know, at least, you know, that, that, that's the kind of thing I think that needs to be.
Anything else, Kristen?
Uh, well, I probably should go through it, right? Yeah, so it is on for a public hearing. Um, for seeker purposes, we, we defined it as an unlisted action subject to an uncoordinated review um, and an amended site plan review. And so, you know, again, my reference is just, I had wanted you to just update the project name on the title sheet. Um, and then I just, uh, went ahead and cut and pasted right in the building material, sales and storage code requirements. So there's three components. A, outdoor storage and display shall not cover more than twenty-five percent of the lot. We would just want to make sure that that's, that could be verified and confirm that. And I, I believe, you know, you had said something like six percent. I think our engineer had a question about that perhaps, but, um, again, I don't know that that's something that couldn't be addressed because I do think it's well below twenty-five percent, um, but it could be addressed as a condition of approval. The second component is about the, the screening and then the third component was about parking, which this part, this property has already been.
Plenty of parking.
Right. There were some other questions that have been raised about, um, what the refuse containers are used for on the property. Are the, uh, storage containers on the property to remain or are those long-term? Are their materials being stored within them? Is there any, uh, ability for the app, your client to be able to bring some of those materials that fall within the setback out of the setback and bring it into the appropriate part of the site? If not, they're, like, as you mentioned, you may have to go to the ZBA for a variance for maybe some of those more permanent structures that were placed. So that, that's fine. I think a lot of this can be addressed, um, as a means for a, or a matter of conditional approval. But I do think that the Planning Board should weigh in on the screening. I did, um, welcome them to go out to the site. I don't know if anyone had a chance to in the last few days or previously, um, to take a look around. But yeah, I, as staff, I, you know, you might want to encourage, one opportunity would be to have the applicant draw up a plantings plan. They could work with staff to pro- propose perhaps additional landscaping, um, as it would make sense to do so around the, I believe, southern part of the property and the east part of the property where it comes around. But, you know, that, that's up for the, the Planning Board's discussion.
My view, I think the western part is the least amount of trees there and there's possibly another thing that will be developed there in the future. So maybe want some, you know, some evergreen.
Right, and that would require that the applicant pull some of the materials out of the setback. So, um, if they pulled some of the materials out of the setback and then also proposed maybe some additional landscaping, the board should discuss if that would be sufficient rather than putting up a fence.
Yep.
And so the recommendation memo that I have, um, it's on for a public hearing. So staff is recommending that you open the public hearing. You could potentially, well, you'll hear a comment, but potentially close the public hearing. Adopt seeker, there is an act prep for you, um, in draft form for your consideration as well as a resolution to grant conditional amended site plan approval.
All right, thanks, Kristen. Engineering?
Sure, um, a few questions. It looks like you're utilizing a, an older survey. We were just wondering if you had a stamped version of that survey, um?
As a matter of fact, uh, not only do we have one, but the town has a copy of it also.
Oh, okay.
Yes, and that's the one that we use, we put it into digital form. And we tried to be as true to copying as we could. I'm not saying maybe there was a mistake made here or there, but I believe it's very accurate and it's difficult to get the stamp put on there because Mr., I think it's Heisman. And it's difficult to get the stamp put on there because Mr., I think it's Heisman.
Yeah, yeah.
Think he's passed away.
Okay.
So however, we could transfer if you would accept it, his stamp, onto our.
If you have an alternate version, that, I think that would be acceptable. We wouldn't necessarily have to do that, but if I could see the original, that would be good.
We prepared two site, well, we submitted, I guess we did not submit the original.
No, but it's on file, Chrissy has.
Okay, okay.
So if that's acceptable to you, then if.
Fine, okay, great. It was a little confusing, I think, looking at the application. If you were proposing anything new, it appears that you're not.
Nothing.
I, that being said, with no site work proposed, I'm a little concerned about the, the current ADA parking not, but you're not proposing any work, so I, I don't think you necessarily would have to fix them. But if that's something that they would consider, I don't. The grades are a little funny in the parking lot. All the ADA parking is on the Route 9 frontage. There's nothing in front of the stores. But the store, there's four or five tenants and there's some levels to the building. So it might be a little tricky getting ADA parking right at the front of the buildings. But if that's something you guys could look at, I mean, it may be as simple as redoing some striping and adding some signs if you can meet the, the slope requirements of the code.
We met, we took your comments for a serious look, so we've already, we're already on this.
Okay, perfect.
Number one, and I personally went and put my pickup truck right onto the spot, put the level right on the side of the truck, and I came up with one inch and 48 inches out of 48-inch level, which is about a 2%,
Okay.
which is well within allowed. And that was the worst, the other one was about 1%.
Okay, great.
And the, the spaces are there now. And if we need to change something, he'd be willing to restripe some of these. I believe we have at least five or six more parking spaces than we need. Now, your question about how to get to the front door, I believe, and I didn't do any actually transit work, but it looked very level, easy to get to the area on the south side where you come to the building and there is a sidewalk that's pitched, bringing you up to the building. That appeared to meet code, but it's been there for 30 years. And there is a small area that's paved that looks a little steeper. I mean, that could be corrected by us making, drawing a, a, a way to approach that by walking a little bit further east, no, west and then doubling back and coming on to the sidewalk that way. So, so we're paying attention to what you said. I believe for the most part, we meet those requirements. And as, again, this, this site hasn't been touched properly for about 30 years.
Yeah.
We realize, by the way, there are some, some legitimate objections that the town has that he's built some sheds back there for storage, which we will prepare drawings for and take him to Tim's office and yet apartment four, because I think they're within the permitted area to build except the one where we need the variance for.
Yep, all right.
The other question, Kristen, regarding setbacks for the materials, we researched again. I'd like to have Beth answer that.
So we were looking into the definition of a setback because we just wanted to see if it related to buildings or, or what it really was talking about. And so I'm just reading from the code definitions. And it says, "The distance from the property line to the nearest part of the applicable building, structure, or sign measured perpendicularly to the property line." And so we just would like your input on where you would think storage materials that are constantly moving would fit into that description.
Okay, thanks. Do you have any comments on that, Lisa, the setback versus the material in the setback?
At the end of the day, it's a Chrissy question because she needs to make the determination. But typically, each of the zoning districts has required setbacks. And it's usually something like 10 or 20 feet or to the building, whichever is less. So at minimum, I would start with what the setbacks are for the exit, for this zoning district. And if there are any buildings closer than that, you might be able to have less. But in general, I would use those as minimum setbacks.
So materials may not be in the setback at the.
Generally correct, the setbacks are supposed to be clear.
Yeah, and structures is a pretty broad definition too, right? So that's, if you look at the zoning definition for structures.
Yeah, but I, I respectfully submit material laying on, on the ground is not a structure. As a matter of fact, it's clearly there to be incorporated into a structure. The material that they have stored there, by the way, is very difficult to, to kind of determine exactly where it is because let's say you had a roof being built and material comes in and 10 days later goes out to that site. And now all of a sudden, that area that was used to store that is empty till something else is put there and it might not be in the exact same spot. This is like a moving thing. So we, we submit that storage of materials is not, not mentioned in the setback requirement. Those are structures. I've done this for 50 years. I've never heard anything other than a building would need to respect the setback or a structure.
There's big trailers, I guess, but they're not in the setback.
No, they're not, but even they're not structures, but they could be easily moved.
All right, let's, we'll have Chrissy give me the final determination there.
Yeah, so ultimately, I, I think I just want to confirm with counsel that, you know, if there were variances, this was uncoordinated. And if the board felt comfortable moving forward with a plan in place about screening, with respect to the area variances and setbacks, we could condition their approval on them going to the ZBA, right? So they don't have to keep bouncing back and forth between the boards?
As long as it's an uncoordinated review.
Yes.
They can absolutely go to the ZBA sort of independently of what this board wants to do. The only question would be if there was anything that this board would want to see after the variances were granted. Once you've closed it out, then you're done. But if you're comfortable with, you know, granting and then having staff work out the details and then having the ZBA grant or not whatever variances they do, then this board can be completely.
Okay, yeah, we're not circulating for the agency or anything.
Right, it was uncoordinated specifically.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Anything else? Right, in that case, I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved to second, in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, 6 to 0. Anyone in the audience? I don't think so, or on Zoom, there was some comment on this application?
There are some people on Zoom, but most of them I can identify as part of another application, so I think we're okay.
I think so. Let me, before I close, I thought, let me, I think we'll go around the board first with some comments and see if that changes whether we're gonna do it tonight or not. You start with the caller here.
Well, my only question really is, is that shed considered a building or not?
The shed is a building.
Shed is a building.
So shed definitely has to come out of the setback.
They'll need to get variance for that.
Okay.
Or get a variance, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the open question at the moment is whether building materials need to all come out of the setback or not. But the sheds or any structures, even trailers, whether temporary or permanent, would not be allowed to be in the setback.
Okay. All right, I mean, I think this is really a zoning issue, right?
But we're looking for your, yeah, your input on the screening.
Are we, do we, we ask them to put a, an eight-foot fence up around the whole thing or is there enough sufficient trees with, I mean, a lot of the trees are deciduous or most of them are, I think. And so, you know, if you go to the, especially in the winter, if you go to the, the building to the east of there, you can look through the trees and see the site. So, so we may suggest some evergreen trees or something or a fence, those are two different choices.
And zoning would be okay with that? They wouldn't require an eight-foot fence?
Well, it's actually going to come down to a variance from the ZBA because the code specifically says that a fence is required. So, but I think if this board were to say that they were comfortable with the screening, that would be communicated to the ZBA and they could take that into account with their.
I thought, Mike and I thought that was a little bit of a gray area because the second part of that language says that it's, or walls that are landscaped to the satisfaction of the planning board.
Right, this, this language is.
It's not great.
Terrible, right? It's, it's, it's a must be screened by a minimum of eight-foot fence or walls that are landscaped to the satisfaction of the planning board. I mean, that's like, that couldn't be more big.
Okay, but right now, the applicant's proposing neither.
Right.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think we, at a minimum, we need some evergreen trees to, to make the, the tree screening if we don't do a fence, but.
Yeah, there seems to be some spots, right, where.
Yep.
Chrissy's only.
There's areas where you can see through and stuff from both, from the different sides, so.
On this matter, at the moment, she simply highlighted the code section with those requirements in it for, so. And since she's not here.
So as we go around, just, you know, let me know if you think a fence versus a landscape screen would be.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, if it's not required by her, tree, you know, further trees would, would be nice. As the gentleman stated, you already have a lot of trees around there that, that are doing a pretty good screening, so.
Okay, so I have one who thinks that we should, we should include additional, maybe evergreen or plantings. Or, or do you agree with that as well? Is that something that your client is amenable to? Because I know we haven't really talked about it, so.
Well, I have, we have the only area that I found where you can see buildings from our site. I didn't go to all these other properties and see what you would see from their properties in our site. On the south side, on that very small section on the south side, all the way over to your left, there's an area where we could, if we look through there, particularly now because of deciduous trees, you know, shed their leaves, you can see two or three residences. And from our measurements, which is, we just took off the county data, it was about 200-some feet. It's a bit of part of a football field, but I can see those buildings. And that would mean to me that those buildings could see me if I was standing there. So that's the only area. And maybe it's about the width of this room. And I discussed this with my client and if he said if the board insists, he would be willing to put some evergreens in that area.
I think, I think the kitchen store, the red roof building there also, you can see a little bit to, a little bit through there on the east side.
And I would see the back of the kitchen store.
Yep.
I don't think those people ever go back there and look at our site, have any concerns.
But, but, you know, as we've discussed, it is off, not visible from Route 9, so it's really back.
But if you would consider approving this with the idea that we would put some evergreens, maybe, like I said, that, I've been down there a number of times. I don't know what this is, I'm going to say it's maybe 36 foot wide. We would be happy to, not happy, I don't think he'd be happy, but he would agree to put those trees there.
I think we, you know, I think there's something, we have to do something.
Okay.
Yeah, I recently had viewed the area. And the only place I noticed is what you had mentioned. I was going to ask you, are those residential properties to the south?
Yes.
So to me, I agree with you, the south needs something, but the rest, the other two sides look pretty good.
Thank you very much for agreeing.
Right, so you, you agree with some trees versus a fence?
Yep.
Sharon?
Trees.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with the trees, with the evergreens, but I don't want the two feet of trees. I think, I think we need, and I intend, I'll leave it up to staff, but, you know, at least six to eight feet trees. I mean, especially since it's such a small area and they have to be offset. And we are not talking about a lot of trees.
I mean, you have to.
But as long as it's, as long as they're evergreens and they're approaching the height of what a fence would be, I would.
Right, right.
I agree, I agree, I wouldn't insult it with suggesting two-foot, three-foot high trees.
Yeah, you gotta put some, and, and you're looking for, basically looking for the holes where you can see through the.
That's correct.
Trees at this point. Additional comments on that too? All right, with that.
Quick thing here, so we're talking about industrial material storage, right? Do we have, do you plan to have a separate disposal for that or would it be the regular disposal for, for, for just purposes?
What sort of disposal are you suggesting?
The material, what, the material.
Maybe like unused or damaged.
Unused, damage, whatever.
How are they handling it now?
That, that is a, an forever-moving situation. Material comes in, material goes out. And material that is basically supposed to be discarded is brought in by a truck from whatever site they're working on. And they're put into containers on a site and periodically removed. Those containers are shown to be on the site right now and we, our map shows that. We might as well discuss this too, that the question of enclosing these containers in a way that you would enclose them in a shopping center where you don't want people to look at that stuff.
Right.
When this is in a contractor's yard, to try to enclose those, I don't know how you would go about enclosing it without making it super difficult for the workers to come in and undo gates, undo this, go put their stuff in the containers and close everything up so it looks pretty. When they're back there, the last thing is they're concerned about looking pretty. And nobody really, customers or people on the road, don't go back there. They're not supposed to go back if they, they could, there's nobody says you can't go back there. But if you go back there and you see material laying around on the ground and if you're offended, maybe you should go back out.
So the dumpsters are mainly ones that get moved to the site and come back again?
Pardon?
So dumpsters are mainly ones that get moved to, to building site and then?
No, 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 these dumpsters are, remain on the site, but they get emptied. Now, some of them could be emptied by one of these fancy trucks, but some of them have to be hauled away to real big containers. And then they're replaced with new empty ones, like Royal does all over the place. But the idea is that those refuse collectors, dumpsters, whatever you want to call them, are there a part, they're necessary for the operation of this contracting business. And to try to screen them to make it look nice, which is really the reason that dumpsters, and how do they refer to, they're not referred to as dumpsters, right?
Refuse inclusions.
Yeah, yeah, you have to have a nice clean word for this.
Enclosed though.
Pardon?
But there's, yeah, right now, they're just the, the green dumpsters.
Yeah.
Yeah, containers.
And, and they're visual, they're visible, ma'am. And when somebody comes in, you can see them. But the only way you can see them is you drive into the backyard, the working part of this operation. And that's why I say I don't think the intent of the ordinance there is try to, to try to dictate how they should be looking.
And they are shared by the other tenants as well?
Well, some tenants, I understand there is a tenant there who sells food, so I think they do use that, but I'm, I'm not that sure.
Okay.
I mean, if you really look hard, change the game, then. Yeah. It's used by other tenants.
I don't know.
If you look hard, you can see it from Route 9 looking.
Yeah, there's like.
Between the two buildings, you can see them, but.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm going to ask Beth to hand out, we have small maps of that one. So would you please hand those out so that you have that with you?
So maybe change from trees to the fence.
Well, yeah, but, yeah.
All right, now.
You can't say anything. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay, so these refuse containers are used by other tenants also?
And other, yes, the tenants.
So they're like right here?
Yeah, vitality bowls, fast signs, they have their own.
All right, but we've got a standard regarding those.
Yes and no.
Could be enclosed and the big ones that they need to move back and forth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that we should maintain our standards.
Oh, okay, so what is this?
All right. Yeah, the rollouts and stuff are fine to.
Pardon?
Leave the roll, you know, the big, big rollouts that they cart away can stay as is, not enclosed. But I think we're going to ask to enclose the, the small ones.
Yeah, so each of the businesses there, right, like Fast Signs, Vitality Bowls, they each have their own dumpster in the back.
I don't know that.
Well, we, we do.
You know that.
Yeah, from being on the site and from the Google image, you can see that, right?
Well, I know there's three or four there, Michael, but.
And they're visible, they're visible from Route 9 between the two buildings.
So the thought was that those should be in an enclosure like we typically require in our commercial districts, so that they're. um, so that they're kept in, in one place, they're not just wandering around the parking lot, and they're, they're a little bit less visually, uh, you know. Obviously, the big ones that they use for their business, that, those can't be screened, because like you said, they need to be able to pull those in and out, and bring them to job sites and so on, so I think that's what the suggestion is.
Right, that's, that's where we're at, I think.
Suppose we relocate them into the area where our storage of material is where nobody could see them from the road.
Then you can't get it, then the truck can't get back there, you'll have to demonstrate how a, how a pickup, how the, the garbage truck gets into the back area, and it can turn around and so on, that might be more complicated than building an enclosure for the dumpsters, no?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that is one choice, but I think it.
I just, I don't know why that wasn't required with the last time this was built, right?
I think the issue with moving it, moving it, you know, further away than the, you know, these tenants using the dumpsters are gonna have an issue with it. So. All right. Did you have anything else?
Nope.
I guess I'm, I'm still just looking for some clear direction, so, um, I would like to add a, a condition then, right? So we would add like number ten, well, nine A would be to, for the applicant to develop a plantings plan, um, subject to ZBA review and the need for any variances and requirement of moving materials out of the setback, and then you would develop a plantings plan to be reviewed by staff, and we could run it past the planning board chairman. Does that sound good to you, in terms of identifying where plantings might go? Um, and then now I guess I'm also.
Of evergreens?
Yeah, so then I'm also hearing B, nine B, um, looking to place a refuse enclosure, um, now on the site? Is that correct? Is that what the board is asking? So, okay.
Yeah, I believe so, anybody object to doing a enclosure?
Nope.
That's been our concern, it's been our standard all throughout.
Traditionally, we would require a masonry structure, so, um, is there any deviation from that, or you're still looking for a masonry enclosure?
I think so.
Can, can we discuss that just a little bit? I mean, this is not in a public area, this is in the back, nobody.
So are, so are all.
Pardon?
Every mall has got some in the back.
I understand that the malls.
And every business has some in the back, but we have, we have a new standard in the town, even though it's been there for, for thirty years, a new standard in the town is to have enclosures to, to help, uh, help.
Now, I understand all that, Mister Chairman, but the, the difference I submit is this, that nobody goes back there unless they work back there. Their, and the purpose of their work is really just go to put something into the dumpster sometime, that's their work. As opposed to when you go to a mall and you have dumpsters, nobody that goes to the mall, if any of you go to the mall to buy a sweater or whatever, you, you never go in there with the idea you're gonna use that dumpster.
But the town has new rules now.
I understand the town might have a rule.
Any, any, any new project in the town, you'll see, you'll see enclosures on all the dumpsters.
Suppose this was Royals' own storage, the Royals' own property, and they had these dumpsters back that they used to run their business? You would actually say the town says they have to enclose, they're in a business getting rid of refuse.
They would enclose the one they're actually throwing trash into that they're using, but.
They would have to enclose that one?
Not the ones that they sell.
Yeah, they would.
Excuse me, I didn't understand that.
So is everybody okay with moving ahead with conditional?
Yes.
Well, if we, if we, uh, if there is a debate here whether they, they agree with that or not, I mean, conditionally, okay, if we make that a firm, a condition.
All right, you can do that, and, uh.
Right, and, I mean, ultimately, if your client doesn't wanna pursue that, then we're, you know.
I mean, he can't do the front, then he can't do his little front.
Right.
Right, or he can come back and talk to the board at a future time.
Well, we're here right now, why would we wanna come back at a future time?
And, and actually, that architectural review, um, that approval had expired, um, and we were working with the applicant as they were pursuing this, and didn't actually require that they resubmit for that architectural review, um, because we had met on site, and we're kind of like in good faith here that we're moving forward to remedy and ordered remedy on the property currently. Um, so ultimately, we're, we are just trying to, to get the site cleaned up and in conformance and having a, a current site plan on file, so that's, that's what we're here to do, and unfortunately, that means adhering to new standards in the town code, which is related to the refuse enclosure, um, specifically.
There is also a residence factor.
Right.
The chase of property, and the vacant property behind it, at some point in the future, will be developed.
Look, we're not, we're here.
But we're not gonna, we don't wanna, we don't need to go there, really, um, it's just that, it's just, if those are the conditions of the board, it looks like I have a, a plantings plan, um, specifically trees on the south side, evergreen, um, to be reviewed by staff.
Not just, yeah, south, but possibly east.
South and east.
And, and west as well.
Okay, so, right, but they'll develop a plan, we will take a look at it, and it will probably come to the chairman?
Yep.
Uh, for sort of, if the rest of the board is comfortable with that, okay.
Take a look at.
And then also, the, the nine B would be about the refuse enclosure, were there any other comments of the board, related to screening, or?
I don't think we, you know, we're, we're not requiring a fence in this, in this instance, it's the main thing, so. Some trees, it should be a lot cheaper than doing a whole fence, and that would be it.
And proper signage would definitely help if you're saying that only authorized personnel would be using that place, right? And if you say, and having, uh, signs which says only for authorized users would definitely help, uh, people who are not supposed to go there.
Of the, uh, refuse, just?
Yes.
I think it actually has a, do not enter sign there already, and it went away, asking people to stay out. Uh, all right, uh, at this point, I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Move to second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero, and we'll move forward with it.
Okay, I move the planning board hereby determine that eighteen thirty-seven, eighteen thirty-nine South Road would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action, date of December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Vote to second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for eighteen thirty-seven, eighteen thirty-nine South Road, subject to the following, respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, set response to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness of inclusive above and not limited to the following, one through nine B, nine A, applicant to create a plant, a planting plan, and nine B to create a refuse enclosure.
Second.
Move to second, it's conditional, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, six to zero.
Thank you.
You don't have to come back here, you just have to work through the conditions and, and, uh.
You mean, we don't have to come back here? I kinda like coming back.
Oh, you're welcome back anytime.
Abiologies.
Every third Thursday.
Maybe I'll just watch on TV. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are these candies for the applicants?
For you guys.
Anybody wants some?
Thank you very much, and good night.
All right, have a good night, have a good night, it's holiday. All right, next, Bambini Parking Facility, North Road, and don't forget your. Yeah.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, the parking lot is back.
Yes.
But the tenant is not.
So, uh, we'll just do introductions real quick, I think, I'm Natalie Quinn, it's been a minute since you've seen us, so I'm Natalie Quinn with K, K A R C.
Kelly Leibert with K A R C.
Ken Kazamet of L R C.
Um, so the last time we were before you was in September, um, of this year, so it's been a minute, so I will share my screen and kind of walk you, uh, through the project and updates to the submission. All right, so these are the, the parcels that we are looking at, um, so the parcels that are within the town are shown here. Unnumbered parcels, but there's, there's a one acre parcel, um, that's highlighted here in yellow, that falls mostly within the R twenty district, um, a small portion that's on the other side of a paper road is in the I N district. Um, this is the, the kind of lot in question, the portion that's in the R twenty district that we're proposing work on, but I'll go through the other parcels that are involved in the application. Uh, the other parcel that holds the primary use, uh, which is a medical office facility, is located at two oh seven Washington Street, and that's, um, in the city of Poughkeepsie, so this project kind of straddles the town-city border. Um, that parcel, or that piece is in the R two district within the city, uh, just under an acre. And then there's a third kind of smaller parcel, also in the city of Poughkeepsie, also in the R two district, um, that is in, in front of that facility, kind of sitting between Washington Street, North Road, um, and the medical office facility. And then what we're, again, what we're proposing to do here, so right now, the parcel that's in the town that we're proposing work on is vacant, um, with the exception of approximately five hundred square feet that's utilized, uh, for billboards, has been utilized for billboards, um, since nineteen fifty-five, and then proposed is improvements on that parcel, and we'll get to the site plan, um, for use as an accessory parking facility with approximately twenty-two parking spaces to serve as the employee parking for the medical offices. Uh, construction is to occur, like I said, only in the R twenty, um, zoned parcel that's within, within the town. There are minor improvements, um, on the two oh seven Washington Street lot, really just the retaining wall, and we'll kind of go through that on the site plan. So what we'll go through in terms of, uh, new materials that were submitted, um, there was a response letter with, uh, responses to comments, uh, from staff and consultants, an updated site plan, which we have a slide for that, um, engineering report, response letters from D O T, uh, Shippo, and then city of Poughkeepsie correspondence, as well as, um, a consolidated, uh, a lot line adjustment plan, and an example of a consolidated, um, lot that exists across, uh, city, municipal borders between the city and the town. So we can start with the correspondence, uh, from city of Poughkeepsie, because the main primary facility, um, is in the city's parcel. Um, staff, uh, did ask us to reach out to them, to kind of send our site plan to them, and see if they required any approvals for what we were proposing to do, um, so you have that letter in your submission, uh, they've seen the full site plan as proposed, and do not require any approvals, um, there are some caveats to what was noted there, one is, and we'll get to this when we get to the lot line adjustment plan, uh, they're saying you can't actually merge tax parcels, um, across the municipal boundary, so we'll talk about what we believe the solution to be there, and the other aspect was, um, there is some confusion, um, about these ten parking spaces that are highlighted here in yellow, um, so those do exist on the site, they do have approved site plan and a filed subdivision, uh, site plan, uh, with the county and in the city, but it looks like some records are missing there about the, the kind of building permit approvals for those, so they exist, um, they were approved, uh, by the planning board, we just need to work with the city to kind of get those ten spaces, legally recognized by, by their zoning officer, so we are working on that with them. Uh, we did also get, like I said, a letter from, uh, Shippo, uh, so we did submit to them, and they have no concerns relating to archaeological or built historical resources on the site. And then we did also correspond with D O T as requested by, uh, the board's consultants, and it's, this is an interesting stretch of road, um, so even though this portion is in the town, D O T has confirmed that it is not within their jurisdiction, and they believe that this, that this portion of the road is within the city of Poughkeepsie's jurisdiction, so we will have to, um, we are proposing a curb cut there, so that will have to go through, um, permitting with the public works department in the city of Poughkeepsie.
This was the main road not too long ago, about a few years back, but before you did the bypass.
Um, and then real quick for site plan adj, um, adjustments, and Ken, you can jump in on any of these here, but I'll just run through quickly some of the changes we made, um, so there was some, uh, confusion about property lines, uh, so that was confirmed, that what we are showing are the correct property lines, uh, we did identify snow storage, let me zoom in a little bit here so you can see, we did identify a few locations for snow storage that are in this kind of dotted area. The retaining wall, uh, based on, on some, uh, conversations with the engineering consultant, the retaining wall has been extended along the full length of the existing structure, um, to protect the foundation of that building. Um, there are updates to the erosion control plan in response to engineering comments, um, lighting updates, which I will get to in a second.
Natalie, can you remind me how, how tall that retaining wall gets at certain points?
Eighteen feet at the highest part. And then it tapers down on the corners as it goes down to the front, and we do recognize that the wall will have to be engineered, um, and we have to do a full geotech, uh, but during building permit process, we would do all that and provide the building department with a fully engineered wall design, uh, as part of that process. Go ahead.
Um, and then, uh, I do wanna point out, so we do have this, and this was always here, this kind of sidewalk along the, um, so we do, we did add a signage here saying employee only parking, so this will just be for employees. Uh, there is a sidewalk kind of pedestrian connection that connects along the south side of the proposed lot, uh, to the existing sidewalk, um, on Washington Street, North, North Avenue. There was conversation about whether one could be added here on the north side of the lot, and then any internal connections, and we did kind of discuss that, but we think realistically, because of the size of this lot, anyone that's parking in this bank is going to exit their car, and they're gonna walk towards the building where they're going, right? They're not gonna necessarily walk away from the building where they're going and walk, and then walk down to go.
Back around.
Yeah, folks just tend to walk in the shortest route that they possibly can, so we feel like they will be coming to this south side of the lot, walking down, um, and coming, uh, to, to the entrance of the building. Um, so that's, I think, up, updates to the site plan. Let me just, uh, so, this is, you know, I think there was, um, there was a correction in the, we made a correction to the lot line consolidation plan that was submitted, um, so in your plan, it had said that that line would be removed, the line between the city that follows the municipal boundary, right? I think historically, the county maybe did allow for tax parcels across municipal lines to be merged, um, based on the response from the city, and what we understand that's no longer permitted, so that internal lot line will remain as, as a lot line separating two tax parcels, but what we are proposing is that the three lots together will be combined until, into a single deed, right? So they will all be on one deeded lot, um, together, so we did update, and this will be in our next submission to you all, kind of clarifying that.
So the, the, essentially what happens is you have a description that is the hole, and then you have a description that is the city person, a description that is the town piece, and that interior lot line that Natalie's describing remains only to, to separate those two pieces in the descriptions within it, but there is one description for the hole, so it's the one lot.
Yeah, okay, so it's kind of a merger, but not.
It is, it's just unfortunately with the town and city boundaries, if we made it one tax lot, then the town wouldn't get taxes, or the city wouldn't get taxes for their parcel, and it would just make.
I mean, there are other, there are other parcels in the, that are.
Correct, across the street.
That have, you know, like McDonald's on Main Street, for example, has, has half in the same town.
The Cosmos across the street has the same thing, uh, and that was what Natalie provided as an, uh, example. It's one line, there's an interior lot line, uh, that is there.
Um, I don't believe we made any updates to the landscaping plan, but that was included, and then the lighting plan, um, we did update, there was a, there was a rogue pole on here that I think was an offsite pole that was noted, so we removed that just for clarity in terms of the lighting poles that are being proposed on our site, which are five. We had mostly adj, uh, addressed the spillage over the property boundaries, I think with the exception, I, noting in the engineer's comments, I think right here at the front, we can't be over point one, and I think there is some spots at point two, so that's where we'll have to.
We'll, we'll figure, work with the light and just move it.
Clean that. The, the only.
Figure out how to get rid of that section.
Yeah, the only one other update that.
Sidewalk to be lit enough for.
Exactly.
The only one other update that I did wanna, um, address, and we did submit a supplemental letter from the property owner, is unfortunately, we were originally working on this expansion of this parking to serve a, a previous tenant of the site, Bambini Pediatrics. Um, that did not, the, the provision of the parking did not happen quick enough for them, and what they were looking like for their timeline, so they have decided to leave the facility, um, which is unfortunate, um, but we are, I think that the property owner is already, uh, talking with other medical, uh, offices to fill this space, so Bambini was filling some space on. to fill this space, so Bambini was filling some space on the ground floor and then a smaller amount of space on the upstairs. So the upstairs has already been filled by another medical office. The ground floor does have an interested tenant. They, of course, are interested in seeing what happens with the parking. So there is the potential, they would still all remain office facilities. There are other tenants within the building that do remain, LabCorp and some others. So we do believe that even though unfortunately, we did lose that really important tenant in, in the area, they're staying in the region. Luckily, they're just moving to a different facility where they're looking to have more parking. The, we've discussed multiple times with the property owner that they do feel like this addition of employee parking is going to be necessary for any future tenants as well. So I think that's it for, for presentation and updates, and then just happy to answer questions.
All right, thanks for the overview. Krista.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it's on for a public hearing. It's on for seeker, seeker purposes. It's an unlisted action, subject to a coordinated review. The planning board adopted a resolution to declare their intent to service lead agency in September at that appearance. To date, no objections have been received. Most of, you know, I had something like twenty comments or something on the first submission, so you've really pared down a lot of the comments that I have remaining, which is why I prepared a draft neck deck for the board's consideration this evening. So staff would be recommending that the board open the public hearing, hear any comments, potentially adjourn the hearing or close it. There is, again, a draft neck deck in your packets for consideration and also a, a resolution to grant conditional site plan approval. I don't know that, I don't know if we're there just yet. I know there was some conversation between Kelly and counsel. I don't know, Lisa, if you have any further comments. I think they pretty much covered everything, but.
So technically, what they're proposing isn't a merger, but we have done in the past where there is a consolidation, you know, you do the perimeter of all of the lots to be combined and with some sort of legal agreement that would be in place. The zoning board issued an interpretation to this previously that said if there's, once the lots are merged, then having the parking on the R twenty lot isn't a problem because it's, it's an accessory use. They, it said once the lots are merged. So we don't know where they stand or, and right now, we don't know where Chrissy stands on the, whether this deed perimeter constitutes, because it's not technically a legal merger, but it has the effect for my purposes. It's similar because we would require something that would require these lots to be dealt with together, so.
So you think, I mean, so we're not getting a sense whether we should do conditional or not because if the ZBA has to.
So.
If Chrissy has to weigh in.
When I spoke to Chrissy this afternoon, her preference was going to be to have the ZBA say whether this proposal to do the perimeter lot was a, constituted a lot, was sufficient for their purposes basically, to allow this to be an accessory use. Were there any other variances that were needed for this? No. So that would be the only thing that was before then.
Lisa, across the street, though, for.
It's on.
And, and even though the building and parking is on the separate, the same way? Because the building has, you spoke about.
I think if we, we had agreed to do something like a declarations, if we do a deed, do a combined deed and some sort of a declaration.
So there is, the ZBA in the past has done variances for, to allow accessory parking to be on a separate lot.
Right.
And honestly, if the only reason you're putting these lots together is for the purpose of having it be an accessory lot, that may even be a more preferable way for you to go, not to merge the lots and simply get a variance to have that, but that's a determination for you. But as I stand here right now, I don't have an answer from Chrissy or the ZBA as to whether, what this does.
I hate that and come back, but.
Well, you could always, I mean, if the board were inclined, you know, I guess the board should discuss how it feels about the project in general, leaving aside that issue. And if the board's comfortable, you could always do, you know, a conditional with that being a condition that the ZBA either grant a variance or an interpretation that says this setup is okay with them.
Yep. It's, it's just complicated by the fact that it's city and town and.
Right. Yeah, I confirm specifically with the county that they will not allow any mergers now across municipal boundaries, so.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Anything else, Krista?
No, I did just have one other comment about the landscaping, because I, that was a good question about the, the height of the retaining wall being eighteen feet. So just maybe, I don't know that I took that close of a look at comparing what was proposed versus the height. I know that we had had some comment from a neighbor nearby, so I just, you know, that would have some concern about what that might look like.
So, so the, you know, when you remember, when you think about it, the, the wall, the neighbors on the other side, the uphill side, aren't going to really see anything.
Right, that's what I thought, but yeah.
They're, they're on the top of it. So there'll be a fence, a safety fence along the top, and then some landscaping to replace any trees that are removed in that area. The landscaping down below on the forefront is going to block the front before you even look into the lot to see it. So when you're looking at it from the road standpoint, you'll have trees and then the lot and then the wall will be in the back. So you'll, the shorter trees closer to the road will give the perception of taller as they get towards the back.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, you'll have to explain what the materials of the wall or stuff, or do we need to do an architectural review of the wall? That's a thing per se, but, but what does, but what does the wall look like? What type of material do you?
So right now, we're just proposing a gravity block wall, which is basically, it's, the big large blocks, the front will be a block face, it's stepped pretty close to near vertical. Yeah, you'll see one on the other side of the bridge in Lloyd, across from the Hannaford, like that type of wall.
Yep.
But when they get into the geotech, they'll talk through the specifics of that when we get the geotech done.
And see if the board members are.
And so the only other comment I had was about the intent, the building use intent. I know there's been a lot of conversation about this, but, so ultimately, that's, that's the planning board's purview with moving ahead with granting parking, based on the intended uses. And then Bobby obviously also reviewed the application.
Yeah, I think the, I mean, from your experience, parking's always been tight there.
Yeah, my, my children go there and, yeah, and the parking is a nightmare. So that's why they need to do this.
For this, for this building, based on the square footage and et cetera.
Yeah.
So let's go to Bobby here, see what.
Sure.
If the, the engineering of the walls being.
Yeah, yes, it is. I'm glad to hear that it sounds like we know what direction we're going with the driveway permit, because that was a bit confusing as to, and I talked to the town superintendent and he said the exact same thing. It's not my road. I'm not issuing a permit, someone should, but it's not going to be me. So that's, it's good to hear that. On the wall, we're looking for that geotech report to see what the situation is with the bedrock, which is more, it's a combination of things, right? So how much bedrock is there? There's, it's unclear if they need to do blasting, there's a potential for blasting requirements, what that rock removal is going to look like. So that's a question. And then they are not under a requirement to produce a SWIP or Speedy's permit coverage because they're under an acre, but because of the nature of the project, they are planning to do some drainage improvements with some underground detention. And we were just looking for some more information on that, on the drainage report that was provided with some drainage maps and the infiltration rates and things like that.
Do you think this is all something they can do conditionally or? I think we should have more information.
Do you have a response about the blasting or, right, because you said something about a geotech, Ken, before about.
So, you know, like we've done in the past, a lot of times that's done for building permit when we get to the actual wall design, not, not for site plan.
Right, and so my, my point is just that the blasting management plan requirements in our code are pretty substantial, so just understanding that now, okay.
Understood, we, we've dealt with it on Fox Run.
Yeah, right.
You know what I mean? Again, that was dealt with after the approvals, when we got in the field, when we did geotech. And in that particular case, we actually VE'd the wall out because the rock was sustainable enough to, to stay in that area, you know what I mean? When it was exposed. So again, through building department and building permit is when we would do those things.
But I think right now, what you have noted on the plans is we are assuming worst-case scenario, right, in terms of the rock needing to be, there, there being so much of it that it needs to be blasted, and that's what we've kind of indicated on there and would meet the blasting requirements. And then we're hopeful that once we get in there, that, that could be reduced. But that's, we've drawn, or we've written up the plans correctly as if that's.
We put all the notes and everything.
The notes on it, but we have not done a blasting management plan.
Yeah.
Okay. Which is not specified in the code for a requirement for the planning board review. It's purview of the engineer.
Yeah, no, it's more just, and I know you're familiar with it, but yeah, it's, they're pretty significant requirements.
It's onerous, correct.
So, yeah.
We would like to not have to.
And again, when, when we're in the middle of geotech, when we're designing, if they can rip it and they can push it and pull it, I don't know. You know what I mean? We'll find that out and, and as they determine the rock material and we determine the rock face.
Yeah, I know, like at All Space, you were like, no, we're ripping.
Sometimes ripping, depending on how much you're doing, though, gets more neighbor pushback because it ends up being a longer period of time that they're having to deal with the sound of this. So, you know, in some cases, blasting is going to end up being the more laborious option for us, but the quicker option in terms of disruption to, to the neighborhood.
Possibly, yeah. Although, yeah, you gotta watch neighbor's foundations and all that. Ken, is there enough infiltration for underground?
Yeah, so when you actually start at the site, there's six to seven feet of material up front, and as you start to go into the site, that's why it's rock and it's there now, you know what I mean? And it's exposed, they didn't, you know, some point when that road went through, they pulled all the rock out to make the road come down. And I think that's where that tree line is and they left it. So basically, from the tree line out is where you have soil, but when you hit that tree line in is where you start to get shallow rock.
All right, so just would you prefer they wait or?
I, I think if the board's comfortable moving forward, we can work out the, the couple of things that we're concerned about.
Okay, because it is, it's not insignificant, so.
Agreed, and, and normally, the, the full package Bobby would get through building permit and, and during that process as well, you know what I mean? So he'll get a chance to go through all of that because we'll have to put it all together, stand engineered plans with the geotech and everything like that.
All right. At this time, I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes, sixty to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes. Let's go around the board for comments. So it's tea this time.
Yeah, just one thought. Is there anything, especially in the back of the parking lot, that'll identify the sidewalk to make it easier for people to get over to that?
Nothing specific, but when, when you're sitting at the walk, that there, the right side of it is going to have concrete right to the retaining wall. So that, that would be the natural side when, when if you were getting out of your car to look, you'd see that's where it is, the other side's going to have grass right up to the curb.
We could also do, needed to sign.
Yeah, it's going to look a little bit imposing, that retaining wall, but it's toward the back of the lot.
Yeah, I, I think it'll be natural to see it when you get out of the car to notice which side.
Yeah, I was just worried about way in the back, if you parked way in the back.
Well, it does go all the way to the back, you know what I mean? So on the, on the one side, so there's two stall sides, let's call it north and south, the sidewalk takes all the way to the back to the last stall. So even if you were on the south side of that, when you hopped out, you'd see there's no parking, no, no cross or parking lot in front of you, you'd either walk or cross and get between the cars onto the sidewalk, or naturally, you're going to walk out towards the street anyway and find your way between two cars and onto the sidewalk that's there.
It is intended for employees, so I would imagine that once it's, they park there once, they'll know where the parking lot or the sidewalk is.
Okay. Yep.
Unlike a public lot, you know, review into various cases.
Sound, that's a good point. Sharon?
No, I'm good.
Rocko?
Yeah, I've got a, a quick thing here. Since this is supposed to be, it's an employee parking lot, taken into account that that was for the business that is currently there. So I assume that twenty-two spots would be freed up and the main parking lot for the customers and the employees would park down here.
Correct.
Not knowing, know the future use, this could become customer parking lot. So then, are we, are we equipped, can we go back at that point and even put in, for instance, additional ADA? Would that meet the ADA, the ADA requirements, et cetera? And plus, employees, I can see employees doing the trick twice a day, once in the morning and then once in the evening. If that does turn into a customer parking lot, which we might not have any control once we approve this, then that's a lot of traffic with the customers and would we have reviewed it with that in mind? So that's really my concern here is that not known.
It's really a building code requirement, so any tenant use, I assume would be reviewed and that they have to have the shortest possible route, whether it was a tenant or it was a patron.
Correct.
They're going to have to have the ADA parking as close to the door where they would not be utilizing this lot.
Right, I wouldn't, I wouldn't include or add ADA.
And if they find that they require more accessible parking, they should be making that accommodation at the building entrances.
But would we have any leverage in making that happen?
I assume the landlord would be working with the city of Poughkeepsie, but, yeah.
But, but also.
But we have no leverage there.
It's not, I mean, it's too far away to be ADA spaces in that lot.
Yeah.
Rocko, the code, the code would.
The front doors over here.
The code would demand.
Right, I understand that, but it's still, we approved the parking lot. Would we have, would we have any exposure, Lisa?
The town wouldn't have any exposure for ADA purposes because there's no.
Okay, but I mean, with just any, if, if that does turn into a customer parking lot, would we have any exposure?
I don't see any. I mean, I don't know if the applicant, what their thoughts are, but it may be, you know, put a note on the site plan that if it turns into that, they can come back. But it, basically, if you're allowing it for employees, the, you know, it may be more utilized or more trips in and out if it's customers, but, or patients, but it's basically the same, I mean, it's engineered to be as safe as possible, it's lit as safe as possible. You know, the entranceway, the parking spaces are all what we would provide anywhere else. So I'm not sure what added requirements other than potentially ADA, which by law has to happen on the city parcel, not on our parcel.
I also just, I would just say, I mean, this is a thirteen thousand square foot medical office building, and it's very unlikely that there's ever going to be less than twenty-two employees in this facility, just basing that off.
I understand.
You know, and this will.
Currently, it is a medical building, but the landlord would look to fill this with any tenant that comes by, if they, if they can't find a medical tenant, I mean, you know, because it is a business. I mean, the landlord is in business to lease the space.
Yeah, I, I, the demand here is medical, right? I mean, we've filled, we've filled the, at least some of the spaces immediately with new medical uses and the new tenant that's looking for that.
Right, now, the other, the other question in this, again, is that in that area, you've got a lot of in and outs. You've got the diner there, you've got the mental health facility, you've got the medical facility, you've got all sport that comes out over there, all, Mike Arteca, excuse me. So they're all within a short span there, so there's a lot of traffic going in and out. So do we have, do we need any type of study to say that that is feasible? I'm only throwing it out, Krista, and I know you're driving this, so, because right now, I go to Mike Arteca's, and so whenever I come out, sometimes I have to wait for quite a while. And then even then, you've got the blind side coming off of, off the road from Route Nine there, I don't know what that road is exactly, and then you got people flying down that hill and.
This is twenty-two parking spaces, so I don't think it meets the threshold for any of the, I think it's more than fifty trips a day, or it might be more than a hundred trips a day.
Hundred.
So with twenty-two parking spaces and employees going in twice a day, you have forty-four trips potentially, and so it wouldn't meet the threshold for anything that would.
Well, if it's employee, we don't know, I mean, it could turn into customer. And then, I don't know that we have any leverage to have them come back.
But even then, if you have even a hundred trips. But even then, if you have even a hundred trips on this road, I don't know that it's going to, I don't know what mitigation there would be if.
Right, I mean, I I think the concern is valid in the sense that we're usually trying to close curb cuts, not create new ones, I mean, you all could say that. But in this case, I, you know, I don't think it's gonna meet that that threshold.
I think there's plenty of site distance there just from.
Correct.
Ultimately, too, we said it was city, right?
City's gonna issue a DPW permit.
So city has to issue that permit too, so they would have the ability to authorize any additional review.
If they, if they had concerns about it.
Yeah.
Correct.
I think I actually sent it to their DPW office on the first go around and didn't receive any comments.
All right. Okay, I think we're good. Uh, anything? Okay.
No, I don't, I have no comments or questions.
Uh.
No comments, sir.
Right, before you get to yours, a quick question on the top of the wall, the, I I suppose for building the wall, that some of the, some of the existing vegetation that's up there will be coming down, right?
Yeah, exactly, how much we don't know yet until they get into the design of the wall.
And is there, I didn't look, I didn't review this office.
Yeah.
For, is there a note or at least somewhere that some of that land, some of that would be replaced in the landscaping?
There actually isn't, but as we talked about it, that's, I think, one of the notes I'd like to craft along the top is is upon review of the geotechnical investigation on how much rock, to your point, is removed, that it be replaced, the top landscaping be replaced and be reviewed by staff to determine the adequacy of the replacement of landscaping in that area.
Okay, I think that would be good for the neighbors on that side.
Yeah.
That's a good point, cuz the landscaping you're doing is gonna be at the inside of the wall.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Mike, that's a good, good point, we'll add that in as a condition. And let's see my two cents, I guess I was wondering, anybody have any concern about the look of the wall, the big blocks? All right. Any, any update on the billboard, so they have a thirty-year lease coming out or they?
Very interesting billboard, that's in the front there now.
They ever gonna go away?
We don't have any information on those.
All right. And that's all I've got then.
Okay, so you would like to do this, okay. I move the planning board hereby determine that two thirty-one North Road would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth, the, for the reasons set forth, the reasons set forth in the secret declaration, secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
A question before I second it. Did we close the the public hearing?
We did.
We did, okay. All right, I second that then.
Move to the second of seeker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes.
I move the planning board grant amended site plan approval for two thirty-one North Road parking facility, subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. And said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to the following, one through four.
I'd like to make five specific to Mike's comment about the.
Four A, or four A.
The landscape.
Four A, replace the landscape.
Yep.
Four A, replace the landscape.
On top of the wall, if need be.
Ken, do you happen to, I, in the neck deck, and I know it's still in draft form, but I had documented that we were only at about point three seven acres of disturbance, but that could change, right?
Um, I think we indicated the LOD out to the, to the back, up to the property line, as far as the extent we would go at all.
Okay, so that's kind of the max, okay, good.
Correct, yep, that would be the worst.
Good, thank you.
I'm waiting to see if there's another change.
Is the ZBA condition included in this already? In fact, it's in.
I believe Chrissy's comments.
But this wouldn't be part of her comments yet?
Oh, no, she didn't, no.
So we should add a.
Condition B would be.
There's number five.
Obtain any necessary ZBA approvals, chat about that.
Okay, four B, to obtain any necessary ZBA approvals.
Okay.
All right, we're done with the comments?
Now we're done with the comments.
We're sure, calling once, or twice, or three times?
I think we cooked it.
All right, second.
Okay, now I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, sixty to zero.
Thank you, thank you, happy holidays.
Thank you, have a good holiday.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Natalie, that's not you, the AI note taker thing on there that says?
Oh, that is me.
That is you, oh, okay, all right, all right, I wasn't sure.
It follows me everywhere.
It follows you everywhere.
All right, we have a few adjournments. Eight Tucker Drive, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to January sixteen, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Casper Kill, I move the, the planning board adjourn the public hearing to January sixteen, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Move to the second at all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Habitat for Humanity, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to January sixteen, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Move to the second at all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And Manor Health Project, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to January sixteen, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Move to the second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes, sixty to zero. This time I move we allow other public comments on the remaining agenda items.
Second.
Move to the second at all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Anyone on the remaining Zoom wish to comment on any other applications tonight? Probably everybody here is a, is associated with the applications themselves, so at this point I move we continue to be.
Second.
Move to the second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes, continue on, next up is Vertical Bridge, Pendell Road. Welcome, guys, virtually.
Good evening.
Introduce yourselves.
Alec Glad from Cuddy and Fader on behalf of Vertical Bridge.
Okay. Go ahead with your presentation and.
Sure. Let me just share my screen. All right, so here we have the overall site plan, which is fairly simple and straightforward. So Vertical Bridge is proposing a new hundred and fifty-foot monopole at the Town Square Media Facility, which is located, as you noted, at two Pendell Road in the RM Residence Multi-Family zoning district. The parcel is nine point eight-three acres in size and it includes an existing office building, employee parking, as well as two guide AM radio towers. The tower closer to the road is two hundred and three feet and the tower located farther back in the property here is a hundred and ninety-seven feet. As part of this project, we're not proposing any towers, or sorry, any changes to the existing AM radio towers. We are only proposing the new hundred and fifty-foot monopole, which will be located in the existing parking lot. This is about a hundred and twenty feet from Pendell Road and it will include a one thousand one hundred and twenty-one square foot fence compound at the grade, which will house the base equipment for the antenna on the tower, and it'll be fenced with a wood fence. Access is through the existing driveway and as part of the project, there's no new impervious surface, it will all be within the existing parking lot. Right now, AT&amp;T is proposed to be the anchor tenant, and here's the elevation, and they will be located at the top at a hundred and forty-five feet. And of course, there's still space reserved for three other future carriers below that. The next submission to the board will include the AT&amp;T RF materials with some of the coverage plots. Also, we will be including two AM reports, which will justify and respond to Cityscape's comment, the proposed location on the site. We also had a Vertical Bridge letter in this submission, which was exhibit C, I believe, explaining why the prior application we had submitted last year was withdrawn, which had proposed some antenna on the existing towers and why we had to come back with a new one. But just to run through that quickly is basically the AM radio towers, the tower itself is the antenna for the AM radio wave, plus there's underground radials around the tower. So placing antenna on the tower and the ground will affect both signals. So it requires additional engineering from an insulation and isolation equipment at its standpoint. Also, anytime the new wireless equipment would have to be serviced, the AM tower would have to be shut off, which affects the AM radio signal. Also, the existing guide towers are not built to accommodate the wind load with wireless antenna added to them. So here specifically, the tower would have to be rebuilt. And also, we noted, or Vertical Bridge noted in that letter about the existing tower that it couldn't be done like the Tucker Drive facility, which you had approved and is under construction now, because it, that would require changes to the AM, the AM signal, which would require the broadcaster to refile and relicense the site with the FCC, but that wasn't an option here because of the particular directional pattern and license that that AM radio tower has. Plus, if you recall from that previous application, that tower was failing and needed to be replaced anyways, whereas the guide towers here are still in good condition. Of course, I have Keith from Vertical Bridge here, if you have any more specific questions on the technical aspects of that. So that's just a very brief, quick introduction, let me know if you have any questions about it. But that's, that's the highlights of that project. So really, we're here tonight primarily just to seek input and confirm the proposed photo locations for the balloon float. So we had submitted this last August. These were locations that we had previously done when the proposed tower was farther back in the, in the property. So before we fly the balloon, we thought it would be a good idea to come to the board to get your input and confirm that these are the locations that you want, see if there are any additional, so we only have to do the balloon float once and then come back and submit the full visual report in January for the February meeting. So this, so this was exhibit C, excuse me, so this was exhibit C to the submission that we provided. There's two pages which show the proposed photo locations, which are here. We did have a pre-application meeting and it was suggested that we add some photos within Duchess County Community College, cuz that is publicly accessible. Also add photographs to the entrance of Pendell Commons, which is the apartment complex, which is slightly north on Pendell Road from the proposed site. And also Cityscape, I had saw in their comment letter, they just wanted some views from Pendell Road, since we're now closer to the road, which, which we will add. So if the board has any other input or requested photo locations, please do let us know.
All right, is that? Let's see, apart, is that an apartment complex to the? South there?
Yes, I can zoom in.
No, that's Pendell Commons, okay.
Yep, so right, this is, that's the Pendell Commons. So we, we have added to take pictures at the entrance of that per the pre-application meeting.
Okay, great. All right, if that's it for your presentation, go to Eric for his comments.
Sure. The application for the board is for a secret review, site plan and architectural review. The only act, it's a, yes, make sure I have my application straight. The only action for the board to take tonight, by our recommendation, is to declare its intent to be lead agency for circulation.
Yep.
However, the board should discuss the other aspects of the application for re-submitting and revisions. For that purpose, there are a couple of threshold questions, including one, the ones raised by Cityscape Consultants, who we'll hear from in a minute. And Steph also had noted the lack of propagation maps or a justification of need for a new tower as opposed to co-location somewhere. But also usually there's a, we usually get the propagation maps, and I think you said that those would be coming. The, also, we're suggesting, another threshold question would be some of the various constraints on the site or information about the site, like the demand for parking for the under-existing conditions. There's no new added parking requirement, but we don't know, they're proposing to use the parking lot, we don't know how that will affect the parking which is needed for the existing site use. So that should be addressed. Also, there's a wetland immediately over the property line to the southwest. That should at least be identified on the plans and with the buffer. If the tower ends up entirely within the parking lot, that's unlikely to be a problem, but if there's access or any other ground disturbance involved with, with construction of the facility for, either for construction purposes or utility connections or anything else, we need to know where that aquatic buffer is located. And the engineer also noted that there may be blanding turtle on the site, I don't know if there was a blanding to that wetland or something else, but that should be addressed. Anyways, with those constraints on the site, we're asking the applicant, we're proactively asking the applicant to consider alternative locations in comparison to this one, depending on the answers to those other questions.
Yeah, it takes, takes away quite a bit of parking, I guess.
Right, and there's, there is potentially other, it's a nine-acre site. So it doesn't necessarily, you know, at least facially, it doesn't have to be right there in the parking lot, there could conceivably be other locations, although there may be other constraints such as by the AM radio wires underneath, we don't know where those are. Might also be helpful to be able to see where those are, our current most, we didn't know this before, but since we received comments, it's our understanding that some portions of the site are also constrained by the presence of those wires underground for the AM towers. It might be useful to know what's the footprint of those.
All right. That sounds good.
And on the viewpoints, that's for the board's discussion. Alec noted the additional requests, I think that that covers it, if you don't have any additional comments on that.
Let's see, there's, I'm just looking at the viewpoint again, well, I can get to it when I, when I speak, but I'll look at it again. The next thing to do is see if the engineering issues are.
Sure, we had a handful of comments, I'll just probably hit the main points. Looking for a structural amount analysis report, geotechnical report for the design of the monopole, it was already touched on, radio frequency analysis. Eric did mention the the blandings turtle that came up in the EAF. And just touch base with Carol Knapp with Aspen Environmental to see, you may need to just do some, some fencing requirements for protection of that. Depending on the season, she can help us sort that out. There's a, a big concern from the sewer superintendent on the location of the existing sound, town sewer trunk line, which does run through the, the parking lot currently. And it, it is depicted on the plans. So we're just gonna need to see some detail as far as access for installation of the, the tower, the monopole. How that, the crane's gonna get in there, where it needs to maneuver, where it's gonna set up, things like that, to make sure that, that we're not doing any damage or impact to that sewer main. And, and depending on what's prepared and presented, it may trigger some other requirements for precaution there. There's, I, it's Alan, I think I saw that we did find the sewer easement agreement for the town.
Right, we've located it, so before the next meeting, if there's any issues, I'll let everyone know.
Okay, so, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I was asked to dig it up and I said, I'll try, and then I was told, no, no, the applicant found it, so I was very happy to hear that.
Thanks, Alec.
There's also, the, it looks like the utility connection will be going along the, I think that would be west property line out to Pendell Road, and there's an existing twenty-foot utility easement for someone else, not the town. So we also just need to look at that and make sure that that's acceptable.
Yeah, nothing blocks it here.
Yeah, one thing that I didn't comment on but came up was a question about a generator, is there any anticipation of generator requirements?
Or battery backup either, either?
Alec, you want me to answer that?
Yeah, if you have any comments.
Yes, Keith, if you know the answer.
Yeah, hi, this is Keith Mandoski, I'm with Vertical Bridge, thank you for hearing us tonight, happy holidays to everyone. AT&amp;T will more than likely have. AT&amp;T will more than likely have a small generator at their site. That's pretty common in today's environment.
Yep. And that would be within that lease area that's shown on the, in the compound?
It would be, it would be behind the fence compound, that's correct. It would be in the compound.
Okay. And typical fuel source?
In this case, I, I haven't checked to see if natural gas is on the, on the property. They will typically try to go with natural gas first, diesel second, and then propane last, just because of the space. But more than likely, they'll go for natural gas if it's available.
I, it's available, very close by, so I would assume so. I know that it is, the neighborhood across the street has natural gas, I know that, on Steinstein there, so. Central Hudson did a bunch of work through there not long ago. I think that, that pretty much covers it.
All right.
Would you like me to go through and address the comments that you had already?
Oh, no, not, not tonight, I mean.
Okay, that's fine.
We're just going to circulate for the agency, you can respond to them in writing. And.
No, no problem, thank you.
We'll go around, this time we'll go around the board for anybody who has any comments on it. I'll start with Nicole.
Yeah, I mean, we were looking, obviously, for visuals from Pendell Road, what it would look like. We were also wondering if it could be put somewhere else on the site in a, in a parking lot where it can be seen from the road. Isn't ideal, but if there isn't another place that can be put on the site, then that's fine. Let's see what else. There was a question of whether or not the antennas were too close to each other, the AM antennas versus the new ones that you want to put in, whether or not there'd be distortion there. So, yeah, I think, I think there's a lot of questions that we still have for you.
Yeah.
You might also want to get Susan, there's a representative from Cityscape.
Oh, right, right. Sorry. Thanks for reminding me, it's Eric. We still had the screen up there, but it goes. All right, Susan, we have our.
Hi, yes, Susan Rayvold, Cityscape Consultants. We had some general questions with regards to the proposed location and its distance from the existing closest AM slash, or antenna slash tower. And we would like for you to address whether or not you have looked at potential interference from the proposed tower to the existing AM antenna tower, both above ground and below ground. And I can hand off to Ben Evans to explain a little bit more about what our concerns are, so that when you send in your response, you've addressed all of our concerns.
I, I can quickly address it. There is a report done by Carl T. Jones, who's one of the well-respected AM consultants in the country. The location we picked does not cause adverse impact to the, to the directional antenna array. That's why we're off-center in the parking lot where we're at. If we move into the middle of the field, we fall right into that pattern and we will distort it. That's one of the reasons why we're not out in the grass field and why we're in the parking lot off-center. Alex has brought up that map earlier, and he can show you the plots for it. We've also put it at this location because it is outside of the ground radial system, so we won't have any impact with ground radials. So the tower will need to be detuned. There is a system that'll be put on the tower. We've already talked with SiteSafe and got a quote for that. So we're, we're definitely ahead of you, or in line with what you're, you're considering.
Okay, that's great. We'll need to see all of that when you resubmit. Ben, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Could you make, could you make that Carl Jones study available to us?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And it would be nice to have the detuning plans in the application, or as part of the, perhaps?
Yeah, once we get the tower design wrapped up, after we do the geotech, I've already got a quote from SiteSafe for the equipment. I can definitely include all of that technology and equipment as part of the package.
Okay, great, great, thank you.
All right, thank you guys for keeping us honest with this technology. All right, now the board members, anything else?
No, nothing else.
Right. You go to.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing.
Just one question. When you do come back, you had mentioned you had done a piece of work to identify how this location was not disrupted by the current facility. When you come back, can you also talk to us, is there anything that can change that? Like weather, other construction in the area that would distort it down the road? So I'd like you to address that when you come back to us.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
I, I think you'll see in the AM plot map how the contours, the radio contours, will go kind of a north-south pattern, and this tower doesn't impact it. So if, if something, somebody were to build north or south of it with a tall structure, it would have to be a significantly tall structure to impact it.
Thank you. Thanks, anything said?
There's, he's got the contour map there. You can see how the, the radio signal runs north-south, and our tower is off to the, outside that, that contour.
Okay, that's good to see the plot. All right, my two cents is, is there FAA approval needed for this height?
At 150 feet, we don't need to light it. We always check with FAA to make sure that there's no helicopters or small airports that may not be visible but are licensed, but we will bring you back FAA approval.
Okay, that's good. And I think the view shed thing should, I don't see it including anything from the Colonial Manor Apartments. I think you should have a view shed from those apartments as well. Those are located off Creek Road, right? To the southeast, they're joining to the southeast of this parcel.
Are they listed as location L?
Possibly, yeah, that actually looks like it might be, yeah.
All right, yeah, we can add a couple from there.
And, and what about, I think you've got the bike trail captured, but is that location N? Is that what that's supposed to be, or?
Yeah, I think N, O, and M were previous rail trail photographs.
All right, yeah, because that's pretty important as well. And, and in addition to, obviously, just some of the demonstration of the need for the tower at this location, will you be providing any information about other, you know, locations in, in the vicinity, the higher, you know, higher, you know, there are taller structures or other towers that are built or proposed, you know, nearby that could fill gaps that wouldn't require a tower here?
Yep, that's always a concern, that we needed another tower.
Right, so.
Right. So, so AT&amp;T is, we're a partner with AT&amp;T. We get the majority of their co-location, or applications to build new sites for them to co-locate. As you know, we have built a site for them at the iHeartRadio site southeast of this particular property. I don't know the address off the top of my head. And this is the next site in, in their ring. I believe their coverage objective is to try to get better coverage at the university or at the college. So that's, that's, I believe, their target, but their RF propagation maps will, will show us that better. I don't have any information on what Verizon and T-Mobile is doing. Right now, I can look to see what we can find on that, but they don't always just, they don't just publish their maps and hand them out to people. So I'd have to do some, some research and see. The only other way we know is public, but we build predominantly for Verizon. We actually just purchased all of their tower assets, and we're their lead partner in this region. And with T-Mobile, we're also, fortunately, they're pretty, they're one of their biggest tower providers. So we don't have anything else on our radar in this particular area for one of those people, but we know that once we build it, we'll more than likely get Verizon and T-Mobile on our tower.
Okay.
Any information you could, you know, include in your next submittal would be?
Yeah, that, that needs to support the need for it.
Understood.
Unless we get the college kids to actually study and stop looking at TikTok and using the data. All right.
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department's circulation of a notice of a set intent, copy of the EAF, and a copy of the application to all the identified and involved agencies.
Second, move to seconded, for lead agency, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I move the planning board to further action on this application, pending establishment of lead agency, and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, 1 through 9.
Second. And 9 includes all our planning comments tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, 6 to 0. All right, let's see you back here sometime next year and.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Next up is 900 Duchess Turnpike, waiting in the wings. Thanks.
Good evening.
Welcome back, Kelly.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I need a presentation for this, but I'm Kelly Leiboltz with KRC Planning Consultants.
Not really, I don't think.
Yeah. So this is, I don't know if Eric, if you want to say anything, but this is really just a, an amendment to an existing site plan. So what's happened is that on the site plan that was approved in 2022, many of the items that you approved have been completed. There's a couple that haven't. And so because of that, we can't close out the site plan, and we keep extending it and extending it and issuing new approvals. So Eric came up with the idea that perhaps we take the existing site plan that you approved and we phase it. So we kind of put everything that was done in phase 1, and then close out that portion of the site plan. And then we have phase 2 and phase 3 that just encompasses the four silos that are left to be built in two phases. So phase 1, everything gets clumped in that was done, which we documented on the plan, and we provided you with a NASBIL showing you that they were completed. Phase 2 would be two of the silos that are supposed to be built in, I think, July of 2024. And then phase 3 would be the last two silos, which would be built in July of 2025, I think we said. Are you sure those are the dates? So it's really just paperwork kind of catching up with what's going on. There's no new work that's being proposed as part of this amendment. It's just trying to get rid of all of the work that's already been completed, and it alleviates us from having to keep doing these extensions.
And then they can add the towers as they, the silos as they demand.
Correct. And so the plan is to, sorry, did I say 2024?
You said, but I got it.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
One of those years.
You know, they're coming up.
You still have a few days left in this year.
Yeah, I think that would be tough.
All right.
So that's, it's real, there's no new work that's being proposed.
Thanks, Kelly. Eric?
Kelly said it. It's a, you have resolutions to waive the site plan public hearing. There's nothing new, and there's nothing new except timing in this plan. And as a condition of resolution.
All right.
Eric, do with this, the timeframes still work for this?
They do, because they, they've identified the proposed phasing as, since this will be a new approval, then the timeframes provide for construction completion within two years of planning board approval. And, and the proposal is to do the phasing within that timeframe.
Beautiful, okay.
All right, sounds pretty straightforward. Only question I had is, I think you alluded to that, that they're going to make the slab all at one time for the whole thing?
Yeah, that was a, I don't know who asked that, but that was a good question.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I should go to you first, though.
Yeah, I, I think the intention is to do that. It would make the most sense, and it's a monolithic core.
Right.
So we can put that in as a condition.
Okay, anything else?
That was our one comment.
All right. Any comments from board members on this?
No. None.
Pretty straightforward, so.
Yep.
I move the planning board waive the site plan public hearing for this amended site plan application in accordance with Town Code 210-151D.
Second. Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for 900 Duchess Turnpike APA packaging, second amended site plan phasing application, subject to the following, respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of but not limited to the following, 1 through 5.
Second. Move to seconded, grant conditional, call question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, 6 to 0.
Very well, thank you very much.
Thank you, happy holidays.
And happy new year.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a time extension, Guardian Self-Storage. I move the planning board grant 190-day time extension for Guardian Self-Storage application, moving the current approval expiration date from January 12, 2025 to April 12, 2025.
Second.
Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next up, I'm going to go to Kristin for her comments on New York State Distribution Service.
Yeah, so if you recall, at the November planning board meeting, the board asked staff to look into retaining a sort of subject matter expert regarding odor and dealing with odor mitigation and monitoring. And if there were, if there were any subject matter experts with, out there that had experience dealing with cannabis specifically. So we were able to meet with Eric, who works for CPL, which is quite convenient, because they are a town designated engineer. And he had submitted a CV to us. I don't know, I, did everyone receive it? Yep.
I think so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Rachel. And so, you know, we, some of us had a discussion with him and felt that his expertise and in the field of specifically odor mitigation were quite applicable, and he has quite an impressive resume. So, you know, staff is essentially recommending that the board would retain Eric with CPL, of CPL, to assist with the review of that 900 Duchess application.
Yeah, I think that was one of our, our main concern with the application is odor, because we've got thousands, 1,000 new residents at least in Eastdale Village there, and all the businesses, and they, they came out in force with the public hearing as well to.
And I think medically, there was a concern of whether or not any odor would interfere with any CDO, with the ambulatory services, which is right down the street there, so.
So we have to make sure if this does move forward, that the odor.
Yeah, so I think we anticipate that the applicant will be resubmitting for the January meeting. And so.
So it's good to have a consultant on board to.
Exactly.
Will he come to that meeting too?
Yeah.
Yes, he would join us via Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Most likely.
All right.
I move the planning board retain Eric M. Mattson, PE of CPL, to assist with the review of this application.
Second. Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, 6 to 0. He seemed like a qualified guy.
Yeah.
All right. Any other business the board wants to bring up tonight?
I move that we terminate tonight's meeting.
Second. Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting has concluded.
Happy holidays.
Have a good night, and happy holidays, and happy new year.